Good afternoon. This open meeting of the Board of Appeals is being conducted hybrid pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting, the Board of Appeals is convening in person and by the Zoom app as posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. All supporting materials that have been provided members of this body are available on the town's website unless otherwise noted. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless I know otherwise. So I'm going to call to order this special meeting of the Town and Nantucket Zoning Board of Appeals, Monday, February 3, 2025, at 1:01 PM. For attendance, I'll call your name if you can just say here since we do have one member on Zoom. So John Brescher.
Here.
Alisa Allen.
Here.
Jim Undani.
Here.
Lisa Botticelli.
Here.
So we have one matter of business today to talk about under Old Business 25-24 Surfside Crossing LLC, the Surfside Crossing 40B. The attorney representing is Paul Haverty. We're going to continue our discussion of the development aspects. You can see on the second page of the agenda, we've kind of done a rough outline last week or last time we were talking about access, and I think we need to continue that conversation today. So access, we hope to hit on neighborhood composition, passive and active recreation, meaning open space versus activity, like planned activities, and then community and development, healthy, health, safety, and welfare. And that means, you know, the residents of the development as well as the community at large. I think first I'd like to hear from the applicant to talk again, if you can, about just clarifying, I guess, for the board and for the comments that we had last time about the access. Why? Because I was looking back at old plans, and there was at one point, you know, the two exits onto South Shore Road, the thinking, or at least why it's not feasible for you to have that two exit or an access and an egress.
Madam Chair, for the record, Paul Haverty, Blatman Babrowski Haverty, and Silverstein for the applicant. I think I would call on the project engineer, Don Bracken, to answer that question.
And I know we've discussed this before, but just to refresh the boards, we can continue with that discussion and if the public has comments as well.
Thank you. Don Bracken, the engineer for the project. Yeah, I mean, so the first plan, as we know, included all the residential lots, the individual lots, and so that design worked with that type of setup. I think when we went back and looked at this new design based on this layout, it made the most sense to have the one main entrance and to have the second entrance as an emergency access entrance. Again, we felt that this layout still accommodates firefighting apparatus, still has good circulation within the site, and we feel this is a better entrance for this type of development that's currently proposed.
Is the entrance? So the, and this is a silly question, but is the entrance as it is now wider than what you had proposed before?
I don't think it's wider. I think under both scenarios, it was 24 feet wide.
So under both scenarios, it was going to have two, like it was going to be two-way, not one-way?
Correct. Yeah.
And is there parking along? Is there any street parking along that first corridor coming in to where you get to the recreation site? I mean, the recreation building?
No, there's no street parking at all. All the parking spaces are shown. You know, there is a row of parking, as you can see on the north side above the community building, that's perpendicular to the road, but there won't be any parking in the road itself.
Is there a way to show the path in which someone would come from South Shore Road into the subdivision if they were on foot or going out to like their school bus stop? Or will the school bus go into the subdivision to pick kids up? Or I'm just curious about the foot traffic or wheelchair traffic flow in and out of this and the subdivision. And is the 24-foot-wide single egress, is that on a waiver? Or is that supposed to be 30 feet wide? And it's, is it required to be a certain width?
Well, you have to remember, the subdivision regulations are made for subdivision roads in so many lots and so forth, but the typical roadway width for a subdivision is 24, 22 feet.
Okay.
So yeah, this is wider than what would be typically required for a subdivision.
So I guess I'm wondering where, how you get, like you're on Surfside Road, and again, where the bus is dropping kids off and how the kids are getting from their bus to where they live? If there are crosswalks, if there are, you know, if there are areas where they have no sidewalk to walk on and they have to walk in the street? I'm curious if that's been thought about and how they would travel.
It has been. I can't give you an exact answer on the school bus. I would just assume that the school bus for this development would come into the site and pick the children up within the site and exit the site. I think, as we've said in the past, that it would mainly consist of the bike path across the street, access to that, and we realize that there's going to have to be a crosswalk and some kind of crosswalk design, you know, in conjunction with working with the town for that. So as far as pedestrian access and bike access, that would be the main access point.
Okay. And then once you're in the subdivision and you're a pedestrian, are there sidewalks that are going to get you to like the clubhouse all the way? Or is there, are there areas that aren't going to have a sidewalk?
There will be instances when you have to leave the sidewalk and cross the drive to get either to the condominium units or to the community building.
Okay, thank you.
So there's no way to have it from South Shore Road and have one continuous sidewalk to get to the community building.
Well, I know they're going to cross over the roads that take you into the parking, but I just didn't know if there are minus crossing over the streets to get into the parking if there are sidewalks everywhere.
Just as you see that on the plan. So the beginning of the driveway, there's sidewalks on each side, but for the most part, after that, there's a sidewalk on one side.
So they're on both sides, and then it switches over to one side or the other?
It's the same as this. I'm sorry.
So walking in, there are sidewalks on either side, and then it switches over from one side to the other?
Correct. Correct. I also like to point out, when it came up, when the DPW director, Drew, was talking about the sidewalks and the handicap access, I didn't realize, but the landscape plans that you do have in your files do have all the handicap access points on the sidewalks that you see along the roadway.
Is that reflected on your plan also?
It's not reflected on ours because our plan, I believe there's a note that specifically says for handicap access, see the architectural plans, so.
Okay. Thank you.
And I just want to point out to you, there was a sidewalk easement on the side of the road that's been removed. Just remind me of that.
But is that removed, was that removed because of the National Heritage? Like what?
Yeah, I think.
Like it conflicted with their permit?
With that open space that's in that area, I think we had reserved that easement in one of the plans going way back and it sort of stayed there, and then natural heritage, that easement is now included in the open space area. I also think that if there were going to be a sidewalk there, you know, it would be probably right up against the road with some kind of curbing. There's a, you know, space between the property line where the edge of the existing road was. And we also talked about if the sidewalk was going to go on our property back then during that version, that there would also be need for an easement on that residence to the north. So I think, given the requirements for the easements, it would make a lot more sense just to keep the sidewalk in the town layout. So that would hook up with, we're ending our sidewalk at the curb in the road, at the entrance.
Sorry, Alisa.
Sorry, go ahead, Lisa.
Well, I just, I had one other question just about the emergency access. If you blow up this plan, the emergency access looks like it's got vegetation in front of it. Oh, no, go back to the landscape plan. Sorry, Billy. You see the trees that are in the buffer zone? Isn't that the emergency access? Road where those plants are jumbled up? How are you actually going to get through there in an emergency when you have the 35 feet that you, is the undisturbed buffer, plus you're sowing some other vegetation there? How does an emergency vehicle get through there in an emergency if it's planted?
I'm not sure why those trees are there, but I'm pretty sure that when that open space area was approved, just like the main driveway, it was approved with that interruption for the main driveway and with the interruption for the emergency access, so.
Okay, well, we need to get a plan that is very explicit about that.
Yeah, that, yeah, I mean, looking at it now.
Yeah, it's not coordinated.
I'm not sure what those, what those plants are. I assume they're trees. I don't know if they could be shrubs, and there's still enough space to get through there.
Yeah.
Either way, you'd have to open up the 35-foot buffer to get access, so that's got to be reflected someplace. Is that reflected on your plan? That the buffers?
The limited clearing is on our plan, but we don't specify the language, translate the language from that approval onto the plan, but that's something we can get back to you on.
And what is that surface on Lisa's question, along with Lisa's question? What, yeah, will you blow that up? What does it say? Wide?
Lawn reinforced turf.
Reinforced turf.
Yeah, so it's like a plastic geogrid.
Yeah. That the grass grows through?
The grass grows between it and over it.
And it can hold an emergency vehicle like a fire truck?
Yes, it can.
Well, the fire department's commented on that, and they said that it's, it can hold an emergency vehicle, but it's not a fire, it's for emergency vehicles, but it's not a fire access road. So this turf, whatever it is, was okay. The concern was that it needs to be maintained to keep the integrity of it. So there should be some, however long, however often it's recommended for it to be maintained so that it doesn't get overgrown or deteriorate in the event of an emergency, right?
Yeah, I don't understand. If you can blow out, zoom out a little bit, Billy, I don't understand why we can't look at a plan that shows a second access road. And it might result in removal of a building or two, but you know, to me, the, and I think to a lot of people's point, this having adequate access in and out of a development of this size, I think it's very important, and it's something that I think I would like the applicant to explore and just see what the ramifications are. I understand there are ramifications, but I think it's an important point that has been brought up, even though it's not required, it theoretically meets the code, it's been brought up as a concern by multiple town people, and I think it's something we should be able to explore, the ramifications of.
And what's also on the flip side, what's going to keep people from using this as daily access entrance coming and going, which creates a whole other situation?
Yeah.
There's a gate at the road.
There's a gate?
Yeah.
Sort of, it's similar to what, is that Satcham's Path, correct?
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah.
So just to think about one more time, so kids are walking to school or riding their bikes, so they have to go out onto South Shore Road, they have to cross over to the bike path that's on the opposite side, and then they have to get out to Surfside Road and then cross back over that intersection to get back on the bike path. Is that?
Well, that's the option, but as we talked about, it would probably make sense to coordinate with the town and get a sidewalk on our side of the road.
It really would.
Yeah. And I think we've already agreed to that in past meetings.
I mean, it'll cut down on any possible kids getting hurt. Yeah, thank you.
Also, it'll help with traffic because you're going to, everybody's going to have to stop. You've got kids crossing and then crossing again, or even people or whatever. It's just going to help with traffic flow. So is that something that you're committing to or work, or agreeing to work on or?
Well, I think we've agreed to work on that, and the reason why it's not addressing these plans is because it's a town layout, you know, you know, we can't design something.
Yeah, of course. Yeah, understood.
Well, who do you have to talk to to get that through?
Who needs to decide? What's that process? Can you, do you just go ask and then they say okay? Or what's the process? Does anybody know?
I think it would have to be initiated by the town.
Well, you would have, you would have to initiate it to ask for it from the town, right?
I don't.
How would the town just all of a sudden like think, I'm going to give them a sidewalk? I just don't know the process.
Like I said, I think it would have to be up to the town. We're not, like, we're not proposing right now to do the design work or.
Well, can you propose to the town that get it rolling and ask them to put in a sidewalk? I'm missing something, I guess, maybe, but why haven't even they been approached yet? This is so obvious. This is such an obvious ask. I don't, and nobody's asked and nobody knows the process.
I think we know the process, it's just all.
Well, can we, can we, can we make it? Can you investigate that for us, Don, and be more proactive in terms of trying to solve the issue?
Yeah, the clock's ticking.
We can certainly reach out to DPW, see if they have an established process for how they create.
That would be great.
The town?
Okay.
And it sounds like my question about investigating two means of egress or two ways in and out of this development has fallen on deaf ears, but I do think it's important to investigate.
I agree with you, Lisa. I think it's, we heard from several department heads, all who focus on the safety of our community, and I heard from all of them that they would prefer to have a secondary access. I think.
As far away from each other as possible, right?
Yeah, it would mean, it would mean some plan redesign for sure to get that in because the buildings that you'd have to extend it, or those two buildings are pretty close, and there'd have to be some changes, but I think if, if you guys could get a secondary access and egress, it would be much appreciated by the board and by the people that had the departments and the people that work for the departments that are going to be doing emergency response for this development.
Madam Chair, one thing I would note is, we've already gone through the process with natural heritage. We have actually already executed the conservation restriction as it relates to that front area there, so we may not have much in the way of ability to change what has already been approved, but we'll certainly look into it.
Thank you. Does anyone on the board have any questions at this time? I'm just making some notes. Okay. Don, do you have anything else that you wanted to add about this at this time? Okay.
Not as far as this site plan is concerned.
Okay. Is there anyone on Zoom with a hand up?
Not at this time.
Okay. Is there anyone in?
Site plan related questions or access?
Well, I kind of just wanted to go through the access part and then move on to other. If it's related to access, sure.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience then? I see, sir, you have your hand up. Would you like to come to the microphone? Just if you can state your name for the record, that would be great. And if you're in a butter, I guess your address would be great, too.
Good afternoon. Robert Bates, retired deputy chief, Nantucket Fire Department. I've watched this battle, I will call it, go on for two or three years now, or seems like forever. You've addressed one of the things I had a question about, which was the on-street parking, but I would also ask, who's going to be enforcing the ban on on-street parking? All it takes is one family having a party, and now the streets are blocked. It's going to be a private development. There's not going to be police going into a private development to enforce on, off-street parking or no on-street parking. NFPA 18.2, .3, .4, .2, .1, .1 states, where there are more than 100 dwelling units, two separate and approved fiber apparatus access roads shall be furnished. This property has one roadway in and an acts, an emergency access path that does not meet the requirements of a secondary access roadway. Those roadways are required to be a 20 feet minimum and 13 feet of vertical clearance, which means no trees, et cetera, that are going to exceed 13 feet in height to protect the apparatus. And even the access pathway that they have proposed, at the end where it would empty into the street, I have serious doubts that a piece of fire apparatus will be able to make the swing with the parking that is located across from it and what looks like a landscaping plan, which is putting excessive stuff at the ends of that pathway. The Code Red consultants, who were the ones that were hired by this group to do this thing, had, in October of 2021, had one of their people wrote that, "Fire department access roads are required to have an unobstructed width of not less than 20 feet and a vertical clearance of not less than 13/6, required to be maintained at all times and cannot be obstructed by parked cars, curbs, snow piles during the winter months of New England. The vertical clearance also cannot be reduced by items such as trees, bridges, walkways, power lines, decorative lighting, and building overhangs. This requirement takes into account the need for fire apparatus to pass each other with compartment doors open, et cetera, and the additional width required for ladder trucks to deploy their jacks or outriggers. Vertical clearance is needed not only for the height of the trucks, but also to allow for the access equipment that is stored on the top of the trucks." Just by reading what their consultants posted on their website, they're already in violation of the NFPA regulations. But they also state that that pathway is not for FD access, so we really don't have an emergency access or a secondary access for fire apparatus. The aerial, we have a 100-foot aerial here, ladder truck. That 100 feet is straight out or straight up in the air. On an angle, you have a lot less than 100 feet of reach. You're still, your ladder still goes 100 feet, but you don't reach the 100 feet. If you look at their parking lots, their parking is in front of the buildings, so that takes however far the building is from the street, then you've got the parking lot. So that adds an extra, typically, I believe, about 20 foot of depth for a vehicle parking. So you could be 40 feet from the building. You may not reach the building with an aerial truck. I looked at the plans this morning. The majority of the buildings, Buildings 1, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 14, and 18 have extremely limited access for aerial operations due to the parking around those buildings, which means those buildings will be relegated to ground ladder operations, which reduces the efficiency and increases the risk to residents and firefighters. As an example, Building 10 has driveways, parking on two sides, and then woods behind it, but that only increases the distance from the aerial to the building. Considerations also must be taken for the size of the aerial when parking it. The ladder truck is roughly 10 feet wide, but you have another six feet that stick out, six to eight feet to stick out on either side, or total six to eight feet, four feet either side, for the outriggers that support the aerial so you can extend it. So you're extremely limited. The distance from the building has increased significantly. All fire department access roads must be at least 20 feet wide, according to the NFPA. NFPA does require the two fire access road far enough apart that both cannot be blocked by the same event, fire, storm, debris, traffic accident, et cetera. The, I had a question, and they may be able to answer it. I'm wondering what the spacing is between hydrants because NFPA requires 400 to 600 feet between all hydrants. Typically, everybody goes 500 feet. NFPA mandates that all fire lanes, which the main roadway is going to be a fire lane, remain clear and obstructed at all times. Who is responsible for that? The traffic congestion and evacuation bottlenecks. If there is an incident there, if you think Old South Road is bad, wait until something happens out there. People won't be moving. Any day during the week, people won't be moving when they go to take their children to school. They're going to stack up at the driveway, they're going to stack up on Old, on South Shore Road, and then they're going to add to the traffic congestion going to the schools. I read through the prefiled testimony of Jeremy Souza from the consulting firm that they used, Code Red Fire. Let's see. Distance from the roadways to the nearest building, they measured based on the ladder truck. I would have questions as to, I know they did the turn radius, but that turn radius is dependent on no vehicles being there ever. If there's one vehicle in there, the truck doesn't go through there. You'll be up on sidewalks, you'll be taking out trees, vegetation, et cetera. What is the, does the plan put vegetation, trees, et cetera, between the roadway or between the parking lots and all the buildings? As those trees grow up, they're going to block access for the fire department with our aerial. The access roadway for, the emergency access roadway doesn't meet any of the requirements. It's also required to be a drivable surface. The system that has been described, that's in place behind the white elephant. We've also been told not to ever drive behind the white elephant with the aerials. They can go back there with light pickup trucks and things like that, but the company that installed it was like, yeah, you don't want to go back there. The, there was a request, and it was, the consultant failed to answer it because there's no requirement in any of the zoning bylaws or the subdivision rules and regulations about aerial access. He refused to answer the question because it's not in any of the bylaws. That's it for, thank you.
We have a question.
Could I ask you one question before you sit back down? The NFPA stands for?
National Fire Protection Association.
National Fire Protection.
Based in Quincy, Mass.
Okay.
I have some questions.
Okay, and for Mr. Bates?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I guess we don't have fire chief here, but it seems like, I'm surprised with fire code, that we're, we get a little different viewpoint of how these codes apply, and I appreciate your information's good, but we're not really hearing that from the fire chief per se. And, you know, is it worth having a third party on our behalf review it, even the fire, the state inspector?
The, the state would, what would need to happen is the fire prevention personnel from here would need to take the entire plan, the water plan, the, everything that would become into this, the ability of the town to provide necessary water and water volume to put out a fire there, gather all that information, then they can go to the state with it, and the state engineers would review it with them. I, when I was, because I was in prevention for three or four years, and it was not uncommon to spend quite a lot of time on the phone with the engineers from the state. They, they know their stuff. This is what they do all day, every day, where we get a project like this, and it's like, okay, we, we review it as best we can, and you call them and they say, well, look at this, and look at this, and no, that won't work. And they can do it almost literally off the top of their head.
And how do we make that request?
That would have to go through, that would have to go through the chief to fire prevention with an entire set of everything that needs to be reviewed.
Okay. And you didn't address really, I mean, can we talk about fire or is this just access related?
No, we can talk about, we can talk about access, but I just, I had a. No, we can talk about, we can talk about access, but I just, I had a, I guess maybe a foundational question, maybe for you, George, or Paul, and I don't know if anybody knows the answer to this, but just thinking about the code, the requirement for the secondary access or egress. I don't, I didn't get the whole code reference, but it was in, I think you said, in a development that has more than 100 dwelling units.
Correct.
So typically, at least for our code, the definition of dwelling unit, do these condos fall under that as a dwelling unit?
First of all, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is George Pucci from KP Law. I think the question is fire code versus National Fire Protection Association. So through you, and it goes to Jim's question as well. I'd asked the retired chief, I think he's referring, when the, when the current chief testified, he talked about state fire code, the CMR. And I think that the retired chief is talking about a set of standards by the National Fire Protection Association, which is not technically part of the fire code. Is that correct?
It is, it is a reference that is fallen back on by the fire code in most conditions. I would, I would have to look and see if the two combine, but they typically fall back on, the Mass Fire Code will refer to it to cover that way, that they're following a national standard.
Yeah, so I think, and I could be wrong, because you'd need clarification from the current chief. What the chief definitely testified to is that the fire code does not require the second means of access. And both he and the police chief obviously testified that that's, that would be their preference, that you have a second means of access, an egress that isn't so close to the main entrance and exit. But I, so I, you know, I'd be happy to be corrected by either Mr. Bates or the current chief, but I think the chief was definitely testifying that the fire code in the CMR doesn't technically require the second access, and that what Mr. Bates is referring to is National Fire Protection Association, which is, you know, a set of standards that, and that's what he's testifying to about the, the second means of access. Is that fair, or?
That's fair.
Yeah, okay, that makes sense.
So the? One thing, too, sorry, Jim, to Elise's question earlier about subdivisions, I just wanted to remind the board that although it does appear that the width complies with subdivision regulations, even though this project does not involve a subdivision, standards and rules and regulations under your subdivision regulations are, they're relevant in your consideration. So if you see some type of thing about grading, or width, or sidewalks, or something like that that are in the subdivision rules and regulations, you can consider those as part of your process. Even though they don't technically have to seek a waiver from any of them, they're relevant in your, your review for, in terms of, you know, standards that were enacted for a particular purpose, like health and safety.
And, George, these standards that are not part of the CMR fire code, I mean, isn't it, aren't they applicable to our review of the safety of this development?
Yes, they would be. I was clarifying just first of all that Mr. Bates was talking about a separate thing than the fire chief was talking about. But again, just like what I just said about subdivision regulations, if you have a legitimate set of regulations and standards involving health and safety and the issues that are within your jurisdiction, it's certainly relevant as part of your process to consider those types of standards.
Okay.
I had it come up in a recent case that, again, not a, you know, without a second means of access and egress, that we, you know, we concede in that case that it doesn't technically violate the state fire code, but that there are other provisions regarding health and safety, including subdivision rules and regulations that required the second means of access and egress. So these are definitely issues within your province.
Okay, great, I just wanted to clarify, thank you.
Madam Chair, could we, could we get a list of those requirements? Whether we have, I don't know if we have them or not, what, George?
The subdivision?
Yeah. I mean, I know there's a general waiver, but that's not something.
Billy, you had your hand up.
That's right, I can, I can send the board links to subdivision control law and the local subdivision laws as well.
Thank you.
And is it possible, Billy, for you to, I mean, I was trying to take notes when Mr. Bates was speaking, but is there somebody that can put together the standards that Mr. Bates feels that we are not in, that this project isn't in compliance with?
I think we could ask, I think we could ask Mr. Bates to submit his comments to the board.
That would be great, just because he rattled off a bunch of different lots, and I just tried to make notes, and I got sort of lost. But I think that would be really helpful for me to understand the aerial apparatus part versus ground fighting of fires. And it was just another perspective that I don't think anybody had ever brought up before, so I really appreciate it. It'd be nice to get more information about that.
Just a reminder, too, about your process, because I know Attorney Haverty and I have our respectful disagreement about the scope of your review and talking about, you know, what's actually before you, the original 156-unit plan and this revised condominium plan. Mr. Bates did not have, ever have a chance to comment on the project change. When, so he was chief at the time, but you'll recall, he came in when the board had an approval with conditions for a 60-unit project, and he had commented originally. So I just wanted to point out to you, to remind you, which you probably already realize, Mr. Bates never had a chance to comment on the project change. In, in terms of, like, specifically, he was just talking about access to, of the ladder truck with the way the parking is situated around all of these condominium buildings. So that was something he never had a chance to comment on before.
So, yeah, so it's, it's good for us to be able to, knowing that, we can consider it because it's new information.
Yeah, hold on. So as far as the CMR or the, the fire code versus the, the NFPA, the fire code is, the fire code is controlling, correct? But the NFPA gives guidance and states, as you quoted, or as you showed us, that if there's over 100 dwelling units, then it's best practice or best standard, or, I don't, you said required, but I don't, I don't know how one trumps the other. But again, for health, safety, and welfare of the community at large and the people living in this development, I, and I just don't, and hearing that, yes, it's not like strictly within the fire code, but hearing the fire chief, the police chief, former fire officials telling us, again, that, you know, a second access is preferable, and I, I just don't see how we don't go there.
Right, the authority having jurisdiction of the state fire code is your current fire chief. He's testified to you.
Yeah.
Certainly in response to Mr. Bates' testimony to you, it'd be helpful if either he can submit it, you know, he can send you a link to the.
And you've submitted stuff to us before prior in the application, so, yeah.
Yeah, and certainly you can have it as part of your process. Remember, you're not done with the public hearings.
Yeah, yeah.
You can take in any information or standards or guidelines that, that are submitted to you. So that, that would be helpful. I can look it up myself, but it'll be helpful for him to just forward it if he has it.
I just, personally, it just seems that if, if there can be a secondary access, even if there's going to be some hoops to go through with the National Heritage Conservation restriction, I, I think it just, I, I think having a development of this size, having a secondary means, for regular traffic anyway, but definitely for emergency, it just, it has to be a priority.
I think it would be helpful, too, to ask the applicant. I mean, you heard today, first of all, as a threshold matter, it sounded to me, in response to Elise's questions, that the, the current plans before you are, they don't actually show it, because they were saying, well, the landscape plan talks about the plantings, and we have this, this, these requirements from natural, natural heritage, but our, our plans don't show the secondary access. You need updated plans that show the actual proposed second access, because they are proposing a second means of emergency access. That has been clear.
Yeah.
If there's a plan really depicting that, though, it, it sounds to me that that's actually in question.
It looks a little wonky on the landscape plan.
And, and so I think you'd benefit from an updated plan specific to that.
Okay.
And I would also ask the applicant, just flat out, you're asking about these emergency access issues. Do they, have they explored other alternatives? And, and if they have, what have they explored? Why can't they do it? And, and if they haven't, they can let you know that, too. But I, you know, let's put that out there. Do they have other alternatives to offer the board?
Instead of me repeating what Attorney Pucci just said, Attorney Haverty, do you want to answer that?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
So to respond to some of Attorney Pucci's comments, the applicant actually did have the opportunity to meet with the fire department and its staff after it submitted the notice of project change. It, the report that was issued by Code Red Consultants incorporated a number of the changes and suggestions made by the fire department at that time. I would also note that the then-fire chief had the opportunity to submit testimony to the Housing Appeals Committee as part of the hearing process, addressing all of the fire department's concerns. And this was not one of the concerns that was addressed as part of that, as far as I can recall. I, I don't want to get into a, a position of trying to answer the questions of the former deputy fire chief here. What I, instead, I suggest that we do is I will have our fire protection consultant review the, the hearing tape, listen to the, the comments that were made, and provide a written response to this board, hopefully before next week's meeting, but certainly before the meeting on the 19th. I, I do want to provide some response where I can as it relates to the responsibility of the condominium association to maintain the roadways, make sure that they're free, make sure that there's no parking on the roadways. That is going to be something that will be addressed in the condominium documents. There will also be an onsite management company that will ensure that all the rules and requirements of the condominium association are being followed, and no parking within any of the, the access ways will be one of those provisions. So that's how that will all be addressed. So that, in terms of whether or not we have had the opportunity to look at providing a full secondary access, that was part of, again, the review that occurred when the notice of project change was submitted. That's why there were meetings with the fire department as part of that process. And this was not an issue that was flagged, and we don't believe that it is a legitimate issue. But again, we'll refer that to our fire code consultant to review, and we'll provide you a response.
Madam Chair, I just want to point out that in the select board's letter to us of all the fire and safety and the other departments, that there is a statement from the fire chief that reads, "This is a very densely constructed development, providing limited access, and will place excessive burdens on the department. If an emergency arises, the need for properly protected residents, appropriate access for emergency equipment, and adequate water supply must be provided." So I don't know what happened between then and there, but we need to reconcile this, because they're claiming it wasn't brought up, just bringing it up here.
The notice of project, okay, thank you, Jim. Yeah, that's, that's important, and that's, that's what I heard from the fire chief as well. But the notice of project change that you mentioned, when was that?
April of 2020.
2020, and that was when the project then was changed to the condos?
That's when the notice of project change was filed. I'd have to go back and look at when the Housing Appeals Committee issued its decision that was subsequently overturned by the Superior Court. HAC initially found that it was an insubstantial change. I think that was somewhere around July of 2021.
And so the notice of project change, that didn't go through public hearing? That was just, you guys did a couple?
That's what this process is.
Yeah.
Yep.
Madam Chair. So I, I just want to say one more thing. So I just want to, I'm, I'm not going to, I don't know how it was presented to the fire department or whoever you met with, but I know for this board, when we were first, had an opportunity to look at that plan, and you want to call it like a notice of project change or app, but then that plan was deemed to be, that change was deemed to be insubstantial by HAC at first, and that's what came back to us for our, our technical review. And we were basically told, like, this is, this is what's happening, so you need to do a technical review of it. But we didn't have opportunity to make really any changes or comments or anything on it. So I just want to say that I don't, I don't think, it was never presented to us at that point that the second, that there was any option to change second access or anything like that. Now, the Superior Court granted, said it was substantial, remanded back to us, and here we are reviewing that notice of, basically, the notice of project change. So I just, I, I don't, like, what happened in 2020 with the notice of project change, basically, at least for this board, was when we got it, it was, this is done, and you just have to make the best of it, and you can do a technical review, but there's, you can condition it, but there's no changes to be made. So I just, I just want to stress that that wasn't, you know, before that, I believe, it was always a two, 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 two places of access for the project, which was the preference.
I agree with you, Madam Chair. And I also want to bring up a point that, and this came up in our technical review, that the plus department had comments from the fire chief that we never saw during that review. So this is de novo for us. I don't know why they were withheld to the last minute, but Leslie didn't turn them over.
I don't, I don't remember that, but I, I don't remember that. But I, but hearing that there was meetings, which I guess makes sense to, to look at the plan, I don't, it wasn't, my, my point is that that review was done sort of in a vacuum, because there was no changes that you could really make. So whether the fire chief said, oh, yeah, we, okay, like, yes, we would have rather had two, or we want to, at that point, it was sort of done.
Yeah, I just want to follow up, just to clarify. There's no question in my mind on, on this issue whatsoever. You were, in the original appeal, you were defending an approval with conditions for 60 units. And, and my job as your counsel in that was to put on a case to defend an approval with conditions for 60 units. We put on testimony of the housing director at the time, and, you know, various witnesses for prefiled testimony to support your decision, which was an approval with conditions. This process that you're hearing from, whether the retired fire chief or the current fire chief, no fire official ever had a chance to look at the, the project change in the context of a public hearing, for the first time. So both testimony is relevant, current chief, the, the former chief, if they want to come and, you know, give you testimony on it. So, you know, we have to be clear about that. We, the context of that, there are no official comments from anybody on the project change, which is the all condominium, 156 units in these buildings under this layout, has never occurred to you, from the current chief or the former chief, until this one and the last hearing when you had your current chief.
Right, agreed, yeah.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Sorry, Billy.
I just had a quick statement to make for Mr. Bates. Just email your document to me so I can forward to the board, forward to all parties involved. My email is on the website, if you don't have it.
Okay.
And then I did want to just follow up on that technical review, what the board ended up doing. We, we crafted a letter with, basically with suggestions that went to the building commissioner. There was nothing sort of set in stone with that letter. It was more of just, hey, we've reviewed it, these are some things that we have some issues with, moral, you know, or these are some things that might, it was, it was literally a letter. It didn't really do much more than that. It didn't really do much more than that. But you.
Did I work on that with you?
Yeah, me and Leslie worked on that together, and then we all reviewed that.
Yep, yep, I do remember that, yep.
May I?
Yeah, and then I want to let Mr. Bates sit down if he wants to. Do you have a question for Mr. Bates?
No, I don't, but I have a question for Mr. Haverdy. What was the date of the Code Red fire report?
I, I don't know.
Roughly, what year?
I don't recall.
Is it recent?
So there, it's not recent, because it was part of the hearing process.
The initial.
Before the Housing Appeals Committee. So the Code Red fire report is based upon the modified all condominium unit project.
It is.
Which, which I would point out, I agree with Attorney Pucci's comment that the fire department never had the opportunity to compare the original to the modified as part of a local hearing process. But I would disagree in the, in the extent that they did get the opportunity to provide their concerns and comments on the modified project as part of the Housing Appeals Committee process, which they did through the submittal of prefiled testimony from the fire chief. So there, there was that opportunity. But I do agree that it wasn't part of a public hearing process such as we're going through now.
Okay, so here, here, let's, let's not even go back. Let's talk about right now and forward for a minute, and I'm just going to ad lib here. But so you've obviously discussed whether or not you can put in a second access. We've been talking about it for weeks, months, months, we've been talking about it. And I'm sure you know whether or not you can put in a second access, a second egress that isn't just for emergencies, that could be used. I'm sure you've explored every possible way to get in and out, and you're not giving us that option. You're not saying you're going to do it because either you can't, or it's going to mean getting rid of one of the buildings, and you want to keep all the buildings that are on the plan. So that equals money. So can you just say, without going back, are you gonna, we have two more meetings. Are you going to suggest a second egress or not? Can you do it, or can't you?
Again, as I noted earlier, we have to go back and take a look at the conservation restriction that was recorded with natural heritage to see if that's even an option.
Okay, you haven't done that yet? I mean, we've been expressing our concern for a very long time, so this is not a surprise.
Well, this is the first time I have, in any forum, heard an argument that there is a provision in NFPA that would require two full fire accesses. In fact, I'm pretty sure the fire chief said differently when he was here in front of you. We relied upon that. We relied upon our testimony from our fire consultant, who stated that a secondary, a second full access is not required.
So until now, you haven't given any thought to a second access that isn't for emergency use only?
Until now, we have not considered whether or not we would eliminate units in order to provide a secondary access that is not required.
Maybe, maybe an easement, like I mentioned a few meetings ago, to get, to have another point of access. I've been talking about it for a while now, and if you guys haven't been talking about it, I don't know what you're talking about. But can you or can't you do it? Are you going to do it, or aren't you going to do it? We have till February 19th. What's the answer?
And I've already given you the answer, which is we will go back, and we will review the conservation restriction that was recorded with natural heritage to see if there is even a potential for increasing the width of that. If there isn't, then we cannot do it.
Did the conservation restriction, was that issued before the project change, or was that after the HAC decision about the insubstantial?
That was, the, the conservation restriction was recorded after the HAC decision. But before the Superior Court overturned and remanded. So that was all done as part of the process of moving forward at risk.
And so, given the fact that the Superior Court overturned the decision because it was a substantial change, I get that the conservation restriction was recorded, but it was recorded on a project that wasn't approved and doesn't actually exist. Correct, right?
I, I'm not sure I would agree with that. We're still in the process of pursuing that approval, and we have every intention of prevailing at the Housing Appeals Committee when we go back there.
But I guess what I'm saying is, I, I don't think that the conservation restriction that was recorded based on an approval that has now been remanded, or, um, oh, what was the word? But it's been vacated, basically. So that conservation restriction is for a project that is not.
Approved.
It's not approved. So I, I don't see how the conservation restriction impacts us because it's on a project that we haven't approved yet. And HAC hasn't approved yet.
You might not think it impacts you, but it impacts my client.
No, no, I, I mean, our decision making, right.
That, that prevents any disturbance beyond what is specified in that document. There is no way for rescinded. It doesn't matter that the Housing Appeals Committee decision was rescinded. We recorded the conservation restriction with natural heritage. We are not allowed to do anything that is contrary to that, unless natural heritage comes along and says, sure, we'll change that.
I get that you're, you guys are constrained by it.
I, I don't think that the fact that the decision from the Housing Appeals Committee was rescinded and remanded has any impact on that conservation restriction. We're still.
Excuse me, can I say something?
I get, Lisa, hold on. I get that you're still bound by it, 100%. I understand that, but I'm saying we're not bound by it. Like, if we, if we, if we think that the health, safety, and welfare of the community trumps, and we need to have this secondary access, or whatever else, then I think you guys would have to go back to national heritage and revisit that conservation restriction, or figure out a different way to do it.
Right, my point is that they could, you know, there are ways that they can retain one way into this development potentially with a lot less, many units. You know, if they went below 100 units, according to this NFPA standard, they would not be required to have that second access. And then they would not have to go back to national her, uh, natural heritage. So there are options that don't involve going back to natural heritage. I think somebody has to, uh, you know, has to, has to agree to, I mean, you have to understand that, Mr. Haverdy, that the only option isn't to just say, well, natural, uh, natural heritage doesn't allow us to put this second means in because of conservation. You can restrict the number of units down to be below that NFPA standard that Mr. Bates brought up.
And respectfully, we do not believe that that is a standard, that it's applicable. It is not part of the, the fire code. It is not part of any local rule or requirement. It is something that is a guideline for national adoption. The fire code did not adopt it, and therefore it's not applicable to this project, which is part of the whole process that has already occurred with the Housing Appeals Committee.
Why don't you make the emergency access a permanent access road, just like the other road? I mean, that's kind of logical, right?
Because it, well, for, there's multiple reasons.
Because there's so much concern, and I'm sure the people that are going to live there would love two ways in and two ways out.
It's not wide enough to serve as a.
But if you take the building out, that's in between, that would be a lot of room that you could expand both. One would be in, and one would be out. It kind of makes sense.
Yeah, there are lots of ways that they can solve the issue if they're willing to look at it, different, you know, look at the project slightly differently than the way it's been presented.
I'm feeling like you're not willing to do that.
We're happy to look at the conservation restriction that was recorded and see if there is any leeway for us to provide a wider access than what is proposed. But until I do that, I can't make any commitments.
I, I personally don't think that widening that access road is the issue. I think it's too close to the primary access road, and I think you would really want to have two, A, I think, you know, having access in and out of the development, you know, I don't know what the scale is, but those two roads would not be that far apart. It really solves the issue. I think they need to be more separated. And again, I don't think that there are, I believe there are alternatives that don't require you to go back to natural heritage, that you should explore.
Billy, can you put up the, um, the, the plan, the proposed plan that we're looking at? I'm just, I'm looking at the Appendix A plan, and I just want to compare them.
The, the proposed site plan or the landscape?
Either one, it doesn't matter. Okay.
I, I, I do. I can zoom in on the, the access there.
So, so what, like, with the other plan? I think that exits and entrance were further apart, but it's just, you know, road, the, the part of between becomes an other road. So like, you know, people can go in and around, or they can go in and go back out. So you don't have to drive all the way through the neighborhood. I feel like it just seems like a much smoother and better design.
You mean the original plan that the board approved? Is that what you want to see?
The one that was, the Appendix A one.
Okay, give me one second.
Sorry, I'm jumping between. And that one is the, all the individual lots, so it's a little bit different.
A little different, but it's still the concept, I think.
The concept is more what I'm talking about. Mr. Bates, oh, you know, Jim, you have a question for me.
Yeah, but.
Okay, sorry.
Can I ask it?
Um, let's just look at this first. I was just going to say you could sit down, but. Of course.
Uh, one thing, I pulled up Chief Murphy's submission from December of 2020, where he discusses the fact that when it went from the 92-unit project to the 156-unit project, there were many unaddressed access issues for the fire department in regards to basically aerial access, which was one of the things that I had mentioned. The other thing is a question that would probably have to go to the applicant, which is, are all of the buildings in this project protected by suppression systems?
That's one of my questions for him.
I think we were told they were.
I think they are.
So we're told, are there variations in fire protection systems? So when we hear sprinkler systems, is it what a layperson would think of a sprinkler system?
The NFPA has different designations for the type of sprinkler systems. There are residential, they, they're all outlined in their regulation. And that's the standard that the state follows for sprinkler construction. So I have not seen a construction plan of any sort for this, so I don't know what kind of systems they have in these buildings.
I don't think there are any included out there at this point.
I think the plan was for all the buildings to be sprinkled. They have to comply with code, but I don't think that's on a plan or anything right now.
I think if you look at the prefiled testimony from Jeremy Souza that I submitted to the board, it does discuss the sprinkler system that's being utilized.
He's your Code Red consultant.
So we, we, just, we're okay. If we're told that, if we require a fire suppression system, we.
If you, if the fire suppression system is required, which is required in all multiple occupancy dwellings, so even technically now, a duplex is required to have a sprinkler system in it. So then it would, when it goes, gets submitted to the building department, they would then submit it to the fire department for review. So the fire department would have review of the, all the suppression systems and such.
And related to that, I think it was Bo Barber, former fireman, spoke last time and threw out numbers that were really quick for me. But, um, you know, what is your view, or have you had a chance to look at the calculations with regard to what our water supply is for the town?
I have not looked at them for this project. I can say that the majority of the fires that we have been involved, that I was involved in the 32 years with the department, we had to request the water company to turn on the pumps to boost the pressure. As a standard, that was kind of a standard with the, the, I, I came back, I was retired when the Veranda House happened, but I came back in and was down there for the day. We were, we were running very close to zero pressure in the water mains during that event.
There is a scientific way of doing calculation.
Yes.
And I think Bo Barber did it in his head, I don't know. But is this something that we could get through this review?
Uh, and any, any engineer who does fire suppression can tell you, would be able to tell you what the requirement would be per building.
Yeah.
It's based on square footage and height of the building.
Right, so, uh, so it's kind of a black and white, yes or no? We have the water to support this, or we don't?
Want to comment, water would be able to tell you what their water main is in the area, what the pressure is there, and then, and what the volume is down there. Because it's not all about pressure, it's all about, it's also volume.
Right.
Because a garden hose will give you a ton of pressure, but you open up a five-inch line on the same thing, and it might trickle out.
Yeah, at least I understand that. But I'm surprised that, uh, to me, fire prevention should be black and white, but what I'm hearing is there's different, kind of different code in place. There's some recommendations. And does our fire department generally embrace all those? Or do they just follow the state code, or?
We follow the state code, and when it references back to the national standards, we, we follow those. The national standards are what gets you, honestly, what will keep you out of trouble. Because if you don't follow the standard that's a normal-thinking person would follow, it goes with any of those things.
And then finally, um, I've heard, I don't even know if the fire chief has commented on this, but we don't have this, this adjoining towns to support us. And how does that, is there some standard in place that?
There is a standard for the minimum number of personnel you're supposed to get on scene within a certain timeframe. The standard is within five minutes. I believe it's five minutes. You're supposed to have 18 people on scene for a normal residential fire.
Okay, and then would there be a standard for this type of project, do you think?
They, there would be, and I don't know what that standard is for a commercial project.
But there is.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
All right, so, yeah, yeah. So, Mr. Bates, I think, thank you so much for your time, and we look forward to getting your comments.
Excuse me, can I ask Mr. Bates one other thing? I just want to clarify something I thought he said.
Sure, yep.
Sorry.
Then I just want to, yeah, okay, go ahead, Lisa.
He said that all multifamily units are required to have a fire suppression system. So would have, would this information have been required to be submitted to the building department prior to them getting the permits that were then vacated because of the Supreme Court decision? So should there, is there something on file at the building department that shows?
If they submitted plans that were engineered, developed, there should be something regarding the sprinkler syst, but the original plans were all single-family dwellings, correct?
No, no, that, like, after, after we had to reevaluate this project in 2022, is that when that was?
Lisa, I think that question is better asked of a, of one of the people that works.
Well, yeah, I wanted to make sure that I understood that, that I understood his statement, that this should have been presented to the building departments. It sounds like it should have been before issuance of the building permits that they started work under.
I don't know the answer to that, but we, there was a, there's a laundry list of things that we went through that they had to do before they were going to get a building permit.
Right, it sounds like that might have been something that.
Lisa, I just have a question for you. Do sprinkler systems, are they included with architectural plans?
Well, you know, they're not required for single-family houses anymore, so, no.
Okay, I was just wondering if they're on the plans, or we.
Yeah, but I would think for something like this, if they're, they're required for, you know, the fire code, that they would be, they, they would be required to show them on the plan, or at least have it engineered.
I think they've, I think they've already said, I think they said that, that, that they, the sprinkler systems will be on a plan, and they are reviewed at some point. But that's sort of beyond, that part of it is more technical and beyond our scope and after our approval. Right, it would be like, wait, if, if this went forward, then that would be.
But it sounded like they were required before a building permit got issued by the building department. So there's got to be something on file, because all these, they got permits issued for this project.
Yeah, but that would have been, I don't know if the, maybe, but I think, I don't know that that would actually, that, if it, if there are, and they were approved, I don't know that they would still be the same at this point. And again.
Well, this, they're built, they're trying to build the same project that they got permits for, so why wouldn't it be the same?
I don't know. Attorney Haverdy, can you answer this question, please? Do you know, were, are, were, before the building permits were issued, are there approved plans somewhere that show the fire suppression? approved plans somewhere that show the fire suppression systems on these proposed units?
So the only building, my understanding, the only building that was issued was for the clubhouse.
Right, okay.
So there, there isn't a building permit yet for any of the residential buildings.
Okay. And the clubhouse, did that have a fire suppression system in it?
Yes.
Yeah.
And was, so was there drawing for that?
That may not be the same system, is it?
Uh, what, so Lisa, I don't, I'm sorry, I don't, what are you getting at? Like, what do you?
Well, I just, I, I wasn't, I, I didn't understand that only the fire, only the clubhouse was the only one that had a permit issued for it. What I was getting at is if they were permits issued for the other residential buildings, you know, there should be something on file for them. And I just was interested to know what they were. But clearly, the residential buildings were never permitted, just the clubhouse. But I think it would be helpful to just make sure that, you know, some of this information must be in the process of being designed. And it'd be nice to get as much information on these systems as possible.
So do you want to see them so you could, to ensure that they're to code?
Well, I mean, I, you know, they talk about their Jeremy Souza's, you know, uh, uh, testimony, but we, we, I don't, I just don't feel like we have the opportunity to have somebody to look at things from our perspective on any of the stuff.
All right. So Attorney Haverty, when you, if this move, if this moves forward, for the fire suppression systems for the residential units, who, who in the, who do you submit those to? That, does someone approve that and determine that they're to code?
That would go to the building commissioner. I'm sure that that would be referred to the fire department for their review and their sign-off to make sure that everything is acceptable as, as it relates to fire code issues. Um, I do want to point out that as part of the testimony from Jeremy Souza, there are certain of the condo structures that are identified as having a higher-level sprinkler system. Um, and that had to do with the distance from the roadway for those, and that they would then get the, the benefit within the fire code of, of being allowed to be further away. Uh, but those are all, again, identified in the, the prefiled testimony that was submitted, um, by Jeremy Souza and by the project architect as well. And if you want, I can submit the, the architect's prefiled testimony as well, although I know you've got a pretty pile of prefiled testimony now.
Okay. Um, Lisa, would you like staff to follow up with the building commissioner and see if he received anything like that?
Well, it would be interesting to find out what was submitted for the clubhouse.
Well, I mean, I, okay. I mean, it's, I think it's probably at plus, probably just go anytime you pull the.
So if, if Billy can grab that, that would be great. And just to, you know, make sure that everything's been followed the way it should have been.
Well, I, okay, but, but those permits, but those permits, like, I don't think there's, it's vacated now, so it doesn't matter what, they, they have to go back.
No, I understand that, but there should be something on file that if we wanted to take a look at what was designed for the clubhouse, they'd have it on file, even if
Oh, yeah, totally, yeah.
Yeah, that's all I want.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Would have been submitted.
Yep, it's available at the.
And madam chair, just a follow-up on my request. Do we need to make a formal request?
For what?
For, um, this review by the fire, what is the state agency that would do the calculations and all that?
Be the Mass, the, yeah, Massachusetts Fire, it's done through the, uh, Fire Marshal's Office.
Yeah, the Fire Marshal.
And it could be done by our, by the department personnel.
Um, I think.
Through the, through the fire department.
Something for the fire chief to do. I mean, I don't.
Well, can we request that?
You want to request the fire chief to do that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I guess we would, I see Billy has his hand up.
Yeah, I wanted to say, whatever that file is that was submitted for that building permit, I'll pull it and have it in my office for if any of you that want to come in.
Thank you.
I, I just do not have the time to scan something like that at this moment.
It's fine. You don't need to do that.
And then with the, uh, I'm sorry, I just lost my train of thought. What, what was the last thing you just were speaking about?
There's a discussion about making a request to the.
Yes, that, I can, I can email on the board's behalf, and we'll go from there.
Okay, awesome. Okay. Um, Mr. Drenses has been super patient. Thank you, Mr. Bates.
Couple of points if you.
Sure. And are we still talking about fire? Are we talking about access or both?
Yes. Uh, there was a statement made that, that Nantucket Fire officials didn't get a chance to see. I want to reiterate that there was prefiled testimony by an Nantucket Fire chief that said that there was access issues. But in addition to that, that there was a testimony of Dave Franzuto, who was the former emergency management director, who said that, that there would be a disaster with the kind of access that is currently projected for this plan. And that's, again, prefiled testimony, it's in your, the first packet for September 5. So it's been looked at. You've had Bo Barber, you've had, um, Bob Bates, you've had Dave Franzuto, all saying the same thing. You also had the fire chief, current fire chief, and the current police chief, all basically saying the same thing. There is a big access issue here. The other point I would make is on the issue of them having a conservation permit, having done that, the law is if somebody's going to build on the basis of a, a permit or, that has been appealed, they do so at their own peril. Anything they do, they know they have to undo. So if they put themselves in a position that's a problem for them, that's their problem. They, it is entirely inappropriate for them to try and make that your problem. It's not your problem. That's their problem. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Drenses. Um, so I know we moved on from that plan that I'd asked to go up, but, um, from that.
I, I can pull it back up. I just didn't want to leave it up there.
Yeah, yeah, no, I just, just for, um, just for an example, to see how much cleaner, the project looks with the two, I think, further spaced apart, um, access and egress. And, um, I can't remember if those were one-way or two-way, but it looks like all three of those roads, A, and, or A, A entrance, I'm just, A1, A2, and Road B are all 40 feet wide.
Mm-hmm.
It just, this seems, it's still dense, or has a lot of, um, lots on it, or residences. I know you guys aren't looking to divide the lots anymore, but it just looks a lot more open and not clustered. And I understand that this plan had onsite, or on lot parking, not on street parking, so you'd need to figure that out. But just for way of comparison, yeah, it just looks a lot better.
Madam Chair, I do not think that that is the original plan. I think that's for one of the, um, potential.
It is. It's the.
That's the 156-unit plan?
Uh, I think this was the, I thought this was the plan for the 100.
That's not, that's not the original plan. That's not what.
No, it was another one that you submitted. I'm just using it for, for reference, not for, I'm just.
So that's, so that's, I guess, the 92-unit plan?
It was from, um, a draft decision done in like 2019, I believe. That's where I found that.
That's not, that's not the plan that we approved, though, Susan, right? That's, that was 60 units.
But you didn't actually approve a plan. You approved a concept?
We, well, yes, and you know.
Essentially, there was no plan that showed.
Oh, right. There was no plan that showed it. That's right.
No, no, because I went back and I was looking back to try to find, um, just some, where, how we had gone and where, how we got through to where we ended up. And, um, you know, it's funny, because the, the, one of the decision, or draft decisions, or that I read, you know, I, I don't really know that we were, um, or thought we were at an ending point with those 60, but it, in the decision language, it said that we had asked for extension to continue discussion, because we didn't feel we were ready. You guys wouldn't grant any more extensions. And so we were kind of stuck with what we had, which at that point was 60 units. Um, so we didn't, you know, I mean, I, we, I, I don't know. I feel like if we had had, if there had been a better, more time, we might not be where we are right now, but here we are. I see Billy has his hand up.
Yeah, just for clarification, this is the lotting plan from appendix A, which was filed with the board's original comprehensive permit decision.
Right, okay, thank you. Anyway, I'm just using it for, I was just referencing it for just how the layout looks.
Conceptual reasons, right?
Conceptual, thank you.
Um, and I think, I think the interesting thing, and I know we, and this isn't necessarily access, but to, just to have the applicant think about it, I mean, one of the concerns that the HGC brought up was the scale of the structures along South Shore Road, and maybe there's an opportunity to have the two access roads with some smaller structures that do, like more townhouses or whatever, that face Surfside Road to deal with, that help deal with the context issue as well, just as they're thinking about it.
I mean, that would kind of kill two birds with one stone there.
Right.
Do we want to talk about, um, do we want to segue into neighborhood composition? And along with that, the, the, um, the recreation base, the size and scope of this, um, community building that we've voiced concerns about?
Sure.
Okay. Um, so, going from where, where Lisa just started, I, it does sound like a good jumping off point would be to look at those structures that are along South Shore Road that the HGC comments came back at as those, um, just being, um, not appropriate, too big, uh, the massing, if those, are those, are those buildings, are there, are there smaller models that you could put forward and swap out, like in the plan? Right? Or do all the, do, I'm trying to remember, do all the buildings have eight or nine units? Are there?
Yes, right. Yeah, they're all eight or nine.
Eight or nine. So, yeah, the HGC came back with their comments basically on, to start with, those, those four that are there. Um. Well, I mean, that's why I was saying you kind of kill two birds with one stone, because if you make those fir-, those four buildings smaller, like say they went to, instead of eight or nine units, went to four units each, right? And they were smaller, and then they'd take up less space, and then you could.
Get your two access roads in.
Move the parking a little bit, you could, and then you've got the, um, the building that's the second one back is, has parking on the side, but maybe you slide that over, you could shrink that one, and then you could get that other access road in there. So that's only one, like if you took one, two, three, four, the four buildings that are along South Shore Road, and made those smaller, say four units, and then you took the, the two that are, um, I don't know where my directions are on this map, but the second row back that were furthest from Surfside Road, and made those two smaller, that's only six buildings you're making smaller, and then you could potentially make an access road, and you'd only lose, say, nine, 18, maybe 25, 27 units?
I think the, the other thing that that might address too, is the, HGC's other comment was that there's too much, um, there's a lot of, um, you know, just taking the same building, just rotating and be a more successful development. If there were more variation between the structures, you know, of heights of buildings, you know, space around them would, and this would help address that concern as well.
Yeah, so that may be a, a good way to, and that area all, I believe, and I could be wrong, is, because I don't, I'm not looking at that plan, but this is also the area where, there were some, the issue with the wells of the neighbors, I believe. So I don't know how those concentric circles work on this, but perhaps that helps alleviate that a little bit as well. And then again, if we've got smaller buildings and less units, then there's less, uh, less roof surface, which is going to decrease the stormwater runoff, which is going to decrease, you know, so those, that's how we can, those are the types of changes that can then get us to, um, and have over, overarching impact for the entire, the entire development, and, um, also impact these other issues of access, safety, and health for the residents and the other people in the community. But most importantly, the residents, because they have to live in this development and. And the butters, yeah, but, but, you know, we're looking at the bigger community, but I also think we, and I think you might have said this a couple of meetings ago, like we don't want to forget about the actual families and people that are living there, not just for 10 weeks in the summer, or eight weeks, but come, but for their, for the entire year. Um, I mean, do you, applicant, are you, any thoughts on any of those suggestions?
So, Madam Chair, just off the top of my head, um, the, the level of reduction you're looking for here certainly sounds like something that would render the project uneconomic. But leaving that aside, I, I couldn't possibly commit to, to even looking at this until I look at that conservation restriction to see if there's any ability to actually put a secondary access there, because if there isn't, then we're not really resolving your issue.
You're probably, well, I mean, I think there's no question, you'll probably have to go back and modify that restriction and/or reapply.
Reapplying isn't really the issue. It's, there's a recorded conservation restriction, unless the, the, the state agency that's holding that restriction agrees to modify it, there's nothing we can do.
But then, but you can't, you can't reduce that number of units.
Well, again, we had, we had the right to proceed at risk. Part of that process was completing the process with natural heritage, and that required us to record the, the conservation restriction. So that is.
But you get ordered.
It's in place. We are bound by it.
Okay. Um, all right. So I guess we'll, we can circle back on your position on, um, on that suggestion. Um, I, Billy, were you able, oh, Billy's not here. Um, for, does anyone else have any comments or ideas or anything that they want to add for the, for what I just said? I would like to, yeah. So it doesn't make, I don't think, until you look at the conservation restriction in detail and get back to us, I don't, maybe we shouldn't continue the conversation right now about access, but I think it's, we're, it's pretty clear where the board stands. Okay. For the clubhouse, um, I went back and looked through, and I could not find what I had pulled last time about the sizes of the other ones. I think Billy might have had an opportunity to do that. Um, but I, I do recall that we had pretty, unifyingly as a board, said that we wanted that clubhouse to be smaller, and instead it got bigger.
I did pull the property record cards from GIS.
Oh, thanks.
Hawthorne Park, Na Shop, Beach Plum Village, and Nasha Quissett.
Okay.
All are pretty much within a thousand square foot.
On, on the ground cover.
Footprint, ground cover.
Yeah.
Um, Nasha Quissett's a bit more, but it also includes a dwelling unit on the second floor.
Right, because that's the original home that was not torn down when they did the development, the farmhouse.
The property record card says it's a bi-bedroom structure, so.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Um.
Just get some clarification.
Mm-hmm.
Is Mr. Chesia with us today? My question is, on his chart, um, and he has a community building, he has nothing for what in his chart for the initial submission. I'm just wondering, was there a community building in that initial submission? Oh. Are you there, Mr. Chesia?
Yeah, I, I apologize. I didn't move him over earlier, so he should be coming right there.
Yeah, I'm here, but I might have missed the question, because it flipped into, like, join as a panelist and restart it.
Oh, okay. I'm, uh, I'm looking at your, um, your plan compared. Oh, okay, I'm, uh, I'm looking at your, um, your plan comparison, and under community building, you had nothing, uh, no community building in the initial submission, is that right?
This was off of the, um, yeah, this was, basically all the information on this is off of the plans that were provided with the dates are listed at the top, so the initial one, if it did have a community building, I think that was for the arcing? So there was no, I'm not sure if there was a community building, but there wasn't any parking for a community building. Because if you follow the, I mean, the, the pages break poorly, I guess, but if you go up, it says parking, then it has single-family lots, condominium units, community building, overflow, required spaces, so I'm not positive that there was a community building without getting the plan back out, but there was no specific parking assigned to the community building.
Okay. Oh, I see, that's under parking, I got you. Uh, okay, I might have misinterpreted that, then there was a community building in the initial?
There was.
Okay, I just read it wrong, thank you.
I, and Jamie or Dawn can correct me, but I believe the community building for the original proposal was a little bit smaller, because that was a different type of proposal, that had ninety-six condominium units, sixty single-family houses, the single-family houses presumably would have had their own onsite amenities, wouldn't have needed the use of a community building, but Dawn can correct me.
Actually, I don't think the original proposal had a community building, it just had a garage space for maintenance.
I think it was more of like, there was an open field, there was a proposal for a basketball court.
Yeah, yeah, but as far as community building, I don't, so I'd have to double-check it, but I don't believe the original one had a community building.
I think you're right, yeah.
So I, my point is, we're not really looking at, I think if you look at our sixty-unit plan, we had a community building, but that's, that's immaterial, so we're going from zero to a community building. So I, I just want the board to be aware of that, I think we have more leeway to deal with that.
Let me just correct that, that there was no sixty-unit plan, other than
Right, yes.
Something that was submitted during the Housing Appeals Committee process.
We actually proved the community building with that, I believe, didn't we?
We did.
With restrictions on size, yes.
Yep. Eight hundred square feet of ground.
We're not looking at, we're not looking at an increase or anything, we're just looking at no community building, and now there is one. So I think that gives us, if you're concerned about the size, a little more leeway to.
Yeah, I mean, I think, um, I think, how many houses are there in Nasha Quissett, do we know? I, roughly?
Give me one quick second.
Okay. I think, the, I think that personally, I think it's too big the way it is now, I, I don't think it needs, um, to be that big, even for the size of this development, um, I think following along with, um, what we see in other developments, uh, around a thousand, I think, I, and I want to say we had talked about twelve hundred square feet, I think some was around where we were hovering. I just think, I think it's, I think it's too big, and, um, I don't think it's necessary, I think it's way more important to have green space for people to be outside, especially living in, in condos where they're not going to have their own yard.
I, I am on the website right now, looking at the clubhouse brochure, it is beautiful.
Yeah.
It really is gorgeous. But looking at the floor plan of the clubhouse. It just looks like it's, um, going to encourage, you know, big parties, which is gonna mean a lot of people and a lot of cars and a lot of activity, and, you know, I don't know if that's, I, again, like I said the last meeting, does it take this to a more commercially used building, because there are so many places to eat and lounge and have a party, and it just looks like there's a lot going on, and I just am wondering if we're tipping scale and it's going over more to like
The private club world or commercial use, thank you, sorry.
Do you, I, yeah.
And I'm just really unofficial, in the eighty-five to ninety-five parcel range, it appears.
Okay, okay. Do you have any, you wanted to add?
Yeah, Jamie can speak to, you know, the sort of the purpose of the community building and its size, and, and sort of what his goals are for this, but I did want to respond to that commercial use, um, point. This is going to be restricted to only for the use of the residents of, of the property, uh, and their guests, it, it's not going to be something that will be allowed to be used as a commercial use, the intent is that it be something that can be utilized by the residents as a, an amenity, um, and, and in particular, because again, the focus of this development is to build a year-round community, this is something that my client very, very deeply believes is necessary for this project, and I'll let Jamie explain it in greater detail.
Thanks, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Yeah, this is something that we discussed at length at the HAC hearings, um, and why it was important to us, uh, so I'm gonna give you a little bit of background, but when we went to an all condo version of this plan, um, our goal with that was to achieve seventy-five percent year-round, uh, occupancy, and that remains the case today, and so for us, it's, it's really a question of how do you do that at a very high level, how do you create community, and, um, and I, and I'll just say, going back like six years, one of the very first meetings I had as related to Surfside Crossing with all of the department heads at the time, in this building actually, I think it was right after it opened, there was one, uh, comment that was made by then Chief of Police Pittman, uh, that was intended to be, I thought, productive, and we really embraced it, and it was really aligned with us, and he pointed out that when he moved to this island, he lives in Abrams Quarry, a forty-B, right in this general vicinity, I'm sure you're all familiar with it, and he pointed out, he said, you know, look, I live in a forty-B, and it's, it's dense, and, um, there's really not much amenity at all down there, and I would encourage you, because I come home every night and I see the kids playing in the streets, they drag their basketball court out into the streets, and that's become their space to commune, and so his, his suggestion, which I thought was from the heart and, and really thoughtful, was, I encourage you to really put some thought into as much of an amenity package that you can, and so that aligned with us, with our intentions, um, on several different levels, but for us, having, having a game room in the bowling alley, we have two community rooms, so the, the, that space is very compartmentalized, we tried to work with the architects in such a way that the building was broken up and reads from the outside as two buildings, not one, I think they've done that very successfully, and the spaces within the building are not huge, vast, open spaces that are gonna be some sort of party hall or anything like that, it's gonna be run by the HOA, excuse me, by the condo, um, the condo association, and, and in fact, on the first floor, there's a full-time office for the property manager, who's gonna be full-time on, in this place, in this, in this project. And so if you, if you break down the spaces, you have two community rooms, one community room will always be there for the residents on an everyday basis, and the second one, we designed specifically for the use of the residents to be able to sign out, so we have a lot of studios, a lot of one bedrooms, a lot of two bedrooms, three bedrooms, but if you're living in a smaller condo, and you have a five-year-old and a seven-year-old, and you want to host a birthday party, right, and you want to have that pride of ownership in your neighborhood where you live, this offers a wonderful opportunity for the, the folks of Surfside Crossing to do that, and they can sign out that space with the property manager in the office on the first floor, and whether it's a holiday party, you know, it's just one room, it's not, we're not talking, you know, hundreds of people, we're talking small, you, you have the ability between the bowling alleys and the game room and that community room to, to, um, to do those sorts of fun events. The gym is a multi-use space, it's not huge by any means, but it's an exercise space that we hope, through the, the condo association, will, will be a bit of a hybrid, and we'll be able to do yoga, breathwork, various classes that can be held there for the community to commune, and all of these different uses that we're, we're trying to put forward, that's gonna reduce traffic too, right, and so that's less running around town from the place, you want to go have a workout, you don't have to drive to the gym, just walk across the street, see some of your neighbors, do yoga together, workout together, whatever, whatever it is, so we've been committed to the idea of a basketball court ever since Chief Pittman said that, we've incorporated that, along with the pool, along with the playground, along with the park, in the wintertime, there's gonna be a bowling alley and a game room, the second floor has office spaces, which are great study spaces, great workspaces for those of us that are, you know, entrepreneurs and wanting to go have a quiet moment to do some billing, so there's a conference room up there, and then there's a whole bunch of small workspaces, and we think that, that altogether, these amenities are going to create a, a neighborhood and a use that is at a very high standard, and we, and we feel really strongly about it, so, you know, pride of ownership fosters a sense of community, offers a safe place for the kids and for the community members to commune.
Jamie, is there a kitchen in this structure?
No, there's like a little coffee bar, I think.
I see a sink behind the fireplace unit.
Yeah, so the idea is that there can be, that we can have like, you know, bagels and coffee out on Sunday morning and stuff like that, nothing extensive. Okay, thank you.
JB, can I ask you a question? Just, just, conceptually, where, will there be a fee to, to join or to like, uh, sign out the bowling alley, like how will that work?
Yeah, I think that that's gonna have to get, you know, worked out specifically as part of the condo docs, and, and how that is, um, ultimately coordinated with the property manager, but I think that, yes, you will have to sign it up so that there's, you know, there's just to be managed well.
And would you have to pay to join the gym, or is that part of an amenity that's included in your condo fees, all the use of this whole building, or will there be additional charges associated with?
So again, I think that this will all get worked out as part of the condo docs, I don't see this as being additional cost, I think that, um, that the community room probably you have to sign up for, and you'll have, you know, X amount of opportunity per year, and then if it's, if it's not otherwise being used, then, you know, you could probably go beyond, but we'll try and make it, um, equitable, equitably available amongst the various owners.
Yeah, that's, yeah, oh, okay, thank you, I think my only, one concern that I do have just given this, none, well, with the size of the building, but I really think that, you know, having people sign up the community room and having small birthday parties is a nice amenity, my parents had that in their building in Hawaii, and it was great, but, um, my one concern that I have with that is just the amount of, um, parking that I think, um, is lacking for this structure, um, you know, and I think, you know, somehow in the whole development, but particularly for this building, um, if, if somebody is to have a party with, you know, twenty-five people, you know, where is everybody, where is everybody gonna park? Or, or forty people, or whatever the amount is, it's just not a lot of parking provided, so maybe a reduction would allow for a little bit more parking.
And Madam Chair, my response to that would be that there's a greater number of parking spaces provided for a fewer number of bedrooms for the modified project as it compares to the original project, parking is far less of an issue for the modified project.
Jamie, I just, uh, I, I like all your ideas, I think, I, I think it does serve a purpose, but how does it, how does this compare size-wise with Beach Plum, which I, I've been to, and it's nice, I like it, um, percentage-wise, I know it, it's not gonna be the same size, but compared to the size of the other.
Well, there's, there's, there's two things that I'd point out, right, so Beach Plum is all standalone homes, and I was the contractor in there for, for three-quarters of them, and I can tell you a lot of them have little gym rooms within them, a lot of them have little pools or little, um, and so that does have a full kitchen, and they've decided to use that, I don't know how it is today, I haven't been in there in a while, but last time I saw it was like a little gym, but that's seventy-five percent seasonal.
Right.
And it's standalone, and so this isn't either of those things, this is the opposite. Um, I mean, my, our hope, our goal is to have at least a hundred and seventeen year-round families here, you know, and, and you can walk to school, and you're right across the road from like that, so anyway, there's, there's, I think, to compare them, the standalone have their own yards. And so, um, and then we abut Saichem's Path, and we abut My Comet Village, and we, we're real, real close to Sherburne Commons, and so when you think about the year-round community that's, that's continuing to build in this area, it's, you know, I think, I think these are gonna be well-used, well-appreciated aspects of a, of a neighborhood.
Okay, thank you.
Sounds like a lot of traffic to me. Really, you want to tell us how?
I mean, I think we've already noted, just trips to a gym, right, instead of having to leave the project site, you can go to a gym somewhere in the community, they can do it right at the building, instead of having to pack up a family and go to a local restaurant to hold a birthday party, you can do it at the facility on-site, this actually very likely will reduce traffic trips relating to this build.
I'm just thinking of it with all the other places he just named, sounds like a lot, and then add the island home.
But we're, we're not suggesting that all of those places will use this amenity.
Oh, no, I'm not suggesting it either, I'm just speaking from a traffic standpoint.
So my point about, you know, the, the property is that a but Surfside Crossing is that they're walking, and these kids all go to school together, and so I think that there's, you know.
This is gonna be the hangout for all the kids.
I think it's gonna be a beautiful community.
It looks beautiful.
It does look beautiful, my concern more is, um, about the practicality of it, so, you know, you want a hundred and seventeen is the goal, year-round families, I don't know where you guys stand on the, um, the buy-downs or the, the, um, deed restrictions that were being discussed a while ago, but then you have the, the twenty-five percent affordable, and I understand HOA fees are, um, can be not prorated, but, you know, equitably assessed for those units, but my concern is more a building of this size, um, the maintenance, the maintenance for the gym equipment, the, um, the upkeep, the wear and tear, the, all of that that's going to cost, and I, and I applaud you for saying like, that, you know, hopefully there, you know, your goal is to not have the, have there be additional fees for use, um, but I just don't see how you're gonna, you know, bagels and coffee out on Sunday mornings and doing breathwork and yoga classes and all this stuff, it's a, it seems like a heavy expectation for this building and a lot of use that, you know, that, that, for the, for the upkeep, for the furniture, for the gym equipment, that all costs money, like who's cleaning it, who's, all of these things that are going to require HOA fees, um, and that, that, that is a cost that is passed on to the, the homeowners.
Yeah, I appreciate you bringing that up, um, I think, you know, there's gonna be a tremendous efficiency, right, to a hundred and fifty-six unit owners to have these shared expenses, right, so if you think about, you know, homeownership on So if you think about, you know, homeownership on Nantucket and insurance and landscaping and, you know, Terminex and everything else that comes with it, you're, you're now, you know, in a very efficient version of that. You know, we talked about solar, that's something we're definitely pursuing after the fact. Our goal is to get to net zero. You know, we're, we're, that's, um, that's a way to, to reduce, uh, the, um, utility costs for the folks that live in here. There's a couple of different ways to go about that. And so we still have some work to do there, but, um, we are going to have, we are committed to a full-time property manager onsite. And so they're going to be able to do a lot of the work, but yeah, we're going to have to have somebody at the pool and there's going to have to be a lot of management and organization. And I think that's what we're proposing. And I think that the efficiency of doing it in this manner is going to be far greater than other alternative versions that would get you a lot of this stuff.
Another question that you could probably answer, but is there an opportunity to maybe accomplish a couple of things here where if it were a little smaller and we added some of these detention ponds that deal with some of these runoff issues? And I don't know if you can do a hybrid system, but I know the detention pond was an alternative. I mean, there, is there a way that you could design it in such a way that, you know, you do have a detention pond along with, you know, all the amenities? Again, it's kind of a redesign request, but.
I mean, I, I can, can ask Don, but I, I don't think you're going to create that much of an area.
Yeah, I don't know.
By reducing the size of this building to actually be able to add in detention ponds. And again, it's, it's our position, and we did submit a letter from Bracken Engineering addressing this, that the modified project, as it relates to stormwater, is actually essentially the exact same impact as the original project. So we don't see any issues there anyways.
Can I ask a question about Mr. Bracken's letter? That's not related to this.
Um, yeah, let's see if there's anyone, is there anyone in the audience who wanted to speak about the, um, the rec, the, um, clubhouse? Is there anyone online with a hand up? Then we could move on to Mr. Bracken's. We don't have anyone online with their hand raised. We don't. Okay. So sure.
Did you want to have Don present his letter first or you want to just jump right into the questions?
I just had some questions.
Um, why don't you, why don't we give Don a chance to present it for everyone and then you can ask questions?
It's really, if Mr. Chesky can respond.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, my letter was just a follow-up of Mr. Haverty's letter regarding that there was an increase of impervious area. I think it was like 18,709 square feet. What, what we, what we've been able to demonstrate is that even though there was an increase in impervious area, there's no net stormwater impacts. We went back and took a look at the original plan, broke down all the surface types and surface areas and compared it with the 2020 plan. And when you run the analysis on that, um, you end up with the same volume that's generated. So I'm using the volume generated as the measuring stick, whether or not there are any additional impacts, given the increase in the impervious area. I also provided a, hopefully a simple summary as to why, why that, that happens. If you recall, the first plan, uh, the individual houses had semi-pervious driveways. And the 2020 plan had more open space, more woodland. And when you balance out all those numbers, you end up with, um, the same runoff coefficient number that's used to establish how much, uh, what the volume is of runoff. So that's, that, that was the purpose of the letter. We try to, we try to come up with something to compare apples to apples.
Um, Mr. Chesky, I just, I'm looking for this. I did a comparison and again, I looked at your chart and the numbers are a little different, but it might be just, I don't understand totally what's being presented. And if, if, if they're de minimis or if they do make a difference, but I, I noticed a difference.
So there's, the, there was multiple plans and, um, so the first one was the initial submission plan.
Yeah, I'm talking about the, the, right.
Right. Okay. So just let me go through. So there was the initial submission plan back in 2018. Then I updated my thing based on the 2019 plan that was in the file, that was one of the negotiated plans.
Yeah.
The 2020 plan listed in, uh, Mr. Bracken's letter is the HAC-approved plan. But my understanding of the plan in front of you is that, is that's the Exhibit One plan, which is the one that was dated, I believe, 2023.
What?
Which was part of the, um, that, that's the one that was actually submitted in 2023 or whatever for review under the sort of the building permit application or the final review. So the Exhibit One, my understanding is the Exhibit One plan is what's in front of you, not the HAC-approved 2020 plan, because there are differences.
So, yeah, so the 20, that, so the 2020 plan does not, is not necessarily what you call, uh, yeah, that, that third column, whatever that is.
Yeah. So it's, it's called the Exhibit One plan, which is, I believe, the one in front of the board now.
Okay.
Is the Exhibit One plan the one, Don, that you put in this? It's not the one in your letter? No. Okay. Okay.
So.
It would be super helpful, I think, for everybody if we could all be looking at the same plan and call the plans by the same names so that we know what we're talking about. So.
And Madam Chair, what I would suggest is the appropriate plans to review are the original plans and the HAC-approved modified plans, um, which are from 2020. The, the 2023 plans are the final design plans that have information that is not commensurately included on the original design plans, because those are preliminary plans.
Because the 2023 plans are the ones that were submitted for the notice of project change and have their, then been remanded back to us.
The, the 2020, well, well, no. The, the 2020 plans, which is the notice of project change plans, are what has been remanded back to you. The 2023 plans are the final design plans that came out of the Housing Appeals Committee decision. Those did not exist when the Housing Appeals Committee rendered its decision, because again, the way that Chapter 40B works, you're only required to submit preliminary plans.
Yeah.
And then you submit final design plans at the end of the process. So the appropriate, um, review for this board is the original preliminary plans and the 2020 preliminary plans, because that's an apples-to-apples comparison. The, the original plans do not have all of the additional information such as the ADA compliant ramps and, and other issues of ADA compliance that are included in the 2023 plans.
Um, is that, Mr. Chesky, so using your terminology, what is the hack-approved plan? Just, this is for my, so I.
So the hack-approved plans were the ones, I believe, dated February 28th, 2020.
February 28th.
So, I mean, yeah, my understanding was that the plans that you were reviewing was the, the final plans or the more updated plans. I guess you could put a condition that there be no change in impervious area over the hack-approved plan and then they'd have to come in again and change it. It seemed sensible to stick with the plan that they want to build.
So Exhibit, then that's what Exhibit, what you're calling Exhibit One?
Correct.
And that's 2023?
I believe so. I don't have that one sitting in front of me, but I believe it.
Okay. But in any case, they differ. Your, your numbers differ from Don's and I'm just, maybe they're, maybe it's a immaterial thing. I don't know. I don't know how these make a difference, but.
But can't we not condition it that way? Because if we do, the, the plan that Don is talking about, or Attorney Haverty, the preliminary plan, does not have the ADA and all of that. And that, we've heard, does increase de minimisly, but does increase and change the impervious area when those ramps or accesses or whatever are shown on the plan.
So I just, just as an example, Mr. Chesky, I, I show you have 306,000 as the impervious area and Don shows 282,000. So that's about half an acre? I, yeah, half an acre. Is that right? No, quarter of an acre.
More. Well, I, I think in parentheses, I showed the difference. In the parentheses, whether it's an add or a minus? Yeah.
I'm just looking at his number.
Right.
Uh, for the 2020 and.
Yeah, those are, that's the number that's on the 2020 plan that was in a table on the plan in 2020.
And you guys, you, you have different ways of descriptions and all, so I don't, I don't, I don't know if I'm looking at, uh, the right categories, but.
No, that's basically what I listed is right on their plan.
Your totals agree. I just, the, the breakdown of impervious, impervious is different.
It, it's because they're described differently. We've got the semi-pervious areas in there.
Yeah.
And then we also broke out patios and AC condenses and all that other stuff.
Yeah.
Which, under the calculations I did, I just combined all that under roofs.
Yeah, okay. I understand that.
And I'm sure, like, as John said, we, we double-checked his numbers and they all agree with our numbers. And so it, it is about half an acre, I would say, more, uh, like you just mentioned, to the 23 plank compared to the 2020. Again, that was as a result of doing the final plans, adding all the sidewalks, handicap access and so forth.
Okay. So that, okay.
Attorney Murphy?
Yes. Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Dennis Murphy on behalf of the Land and Water Council. Just a couple of quick responses. It would make very little sense for you to compare a plan from seven years ago to a plan from five years ago. Please don't do that. Look at the plan that they're looking to build, as your own peer reviewer suggests. So the way to compare is what they originally proposed to what they're proposing to build today. It is half an acre. I, I sat here last time, Cheshire calculated 32,000 square feet, not 18,000. That's almost double. The other responses, I would just reiterate, the higher the impervious coverage, the more stormwater, the greater the pollutant load to the Zone 2. It's a direct one-to-one relationship. The, um, standards within the LUPL and the Zone 2, which you remember under the stormwater standards, that's five and six, for critical areas and higher pollutant loads, it specifies, my engineer couldn't be here today, but it specifies the kinds of treatment you have to use. The ones that are proposed are not approved. There, there's a list in the handbook and this is what Reardon keeps saying, they're, they're not approved. The last point I would make is that, um, the standards for a critical area where you have recharge to the public water supply, um, should be greater for a stormwater system than they are outside of the Zone 2. And that's not the case. So we, we can't even agree on which version of the plan to compare. It's unfortunate, we're not making progress. I will ask Reardon to respond substantively to that letter, but I don't think that closes the loop on the stormwater issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Durencis?
Madam Chair, if I could just respond to that quickly?
Uh, sure. Sorry.
Again, I, I want to point out, what Attorney Murphy is requesting this board do is to compare a preliminary plan to a final plan. That's not appropriate. That preliminary plan from the original design is going to need all of the additional information that was included in the 2023 final plans, um, in order for it to have ever been constructed. So the amount of impervious that would be necessary to construct that plan is going to be increased from what is shown on the original, uh, information, the same way it was increased as it related to the 2020 version. That's just a, a fact of how Chapter 40B works. So again, it, our, our position is the appropriate comparison is the preliminary plans from the original design to the preliminary plans for the 2020 design. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Attorney Durencis?
First, I want to say that we do not agree with Mr. Haverty, but I rise because I have a, uh, witness who's time-sensitive and I'd like to get that witness before this board.
Okay.
Uh, I'm wondering if we could, this, this is an argument that could go on.
Forever.
And you've heard that, that, that the Land Council is going to be submitting additional materials, so perhaps it would make sense to have all the materials before you pursue further that issue. And I'm, I'm wondering if I can get my witness on and off the stand.
What is your, what is your person, your one, are they on Zoom or in the room?
They're on Zoom.
Okay. And what topic would they like to speak about? The what?
PFAS and water.
Oh, yeah, sure. Okay. Okay.
Stormwater.
Yeah, we can hear from them now.
So we would like to call Kristin Mello as the witness.
Can you bring her over? Kristin, you should be able to speak now.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Thank you so much for allowing me to speak with you today. My name is Kristin Mello. I'm from Westfield, Massachusetts, home of Barnes Air National Guard Base and the 104th Fighter Wing, from which my father retired a lieutenant colonel. I was born and raised here, went away to college for a bachelor's degree in chemistry from UMass Amherst and the University of Delaware for a master's in analytical chemistry focusing on chemometrics and advanced chemical data analysis. I had moved back to Westfield and was a full-time stay-at-home auntie raising my brother's two children, one of whom was a bottle-fed infant when in 2016, it was revealed, the firefighter training at the base had contaminated all of our North Side Municipal Drinking Water Wells and dozens of private wells. Because of my education, friends and neighbors began meeting with me to discuss our contamination. And in February of 2017, we founded Westfield Residents Advocating for Ourselves, Advocating for Themselves Raft, now a 501(c)(3), whose mission is education and advocacy for those affected by pollution of their natural resources. My water advocacy work led to my having been elected an at-large seat on the Westfield City Council in 2019 and re-elected in '21 and '23. I serve as the Chair of its Natural Resources Subcommittee and while the service informs my comments today, I never speak for the council or for the city. As a resident, I can tell you that the city of Westfield has bonded $31 million so far to filter the PFAS-contaminated water and the Water Commission just raised our rates again last week by 40%. For the last few years, I have been analyzing Nantucket's PFAS data from Mass DEP for the Nantucket PFAS Well Project. Last summer, I mapped the data to date on an on-island community event and I helped author the report, sharing some preliminary results from expanded PFAS testing that had been performed. In January, DEP posted thousands more pages of analytical laboratory reports that I continue to work through. It is from this background and with all this varied experience that I am speaking, thank you again for your time and I offer you the following for your consideration during your deliberations. First, we need to clarify the definition of impervious surface. As defined by the United States Environmental Protection Agency in the state of Massachusetts, in Appendix A of the MS-4 permit, where MS-4 means municipal separate storm sewer systems, impervious surface is defined as any surface that prevents or significantly impedes the infiltration of water into the underlying soil. This can include but is not limited to roads, driveways, parking areas and other created using non-porous material, buildings, rooftop structures, artificial turf and compacted gravel or soil. Which means we need to make a correction, because in the 2018 application, the impervious surface calculations did not include the gravel areas and those numbers are therefore incorrect and changes that reference those numbers are also therefore incorrect. numbers are also therefore incorrect. Using the correct calculations, the 2020 plan represents 6.48 acres of impervious surface, a reduction of 2,211 square feet or 0.4%. While I am on the topic of impervious surface, does the application include projected annual stormwater increase to the area from the 6.48 acres of impervious surface? One inch of rainfall on an acre of parking lot produces 27,000 gallons of stormwater to manage. The average annual rainfall on Nantucket at the airport, as determined by the National Centers for Environmental Information, is 41.1 inches, and that data is from 2009 to present. So if you have 41.1 inches of rain on 6.48 acres at 27,000 gallons per inch, per acre of impervious surface, annually, that's 7.2 million gallons of contaminated stormwater to manage. What protection is being offered to the abutting private wells, those downgradient, and the entire island's Zone 2 recharge area? There is a second correction I need to make. At the meeting held on January 24th, 2025, an opinion was offered to you in response to a comment by Ms. Perry, that the water runoff from a fire would have fewer contaminants than your municipal water supply. This opinion is dangerously misinformed. Thermal processes lead to the formation of dozens of toxic substances. Researchers have tested fire-water runoff and found it to contain phosphates, sulfates, nitrates, low molecular weight organic compounds including formaldehyde, acrylene, butadiene, and vinyl chloride, VOCs, SVOCs, polyaromatic hydrocarbons, polychlorinated dioxins, furans, cyanide, toluene, and metals including copper, zinc, cadmium, lead, chromium, arsenic, mercury, and of course PFAS. Whether from a hydrant or a sprinkler system after being used to suppress a fire, the water is surely contaminated, and to suggest otherwise is unacceptable. Is there a plan for this water to be diverted to the wastewater treatment plant? Parking lots have become a major cause of water quality degradation. Non-point source pollutants include petroleum hydrocarbons, nitrates, and heavy metals like zinc, cadmium, copper, nickel, lead, chromium, manganese, iron, vanadium, cobalt, and aluminum. Other constituents include barium, beryllium, chlorine, fluorine, potassium, magnesium, sodium, antimony, selenium, and calcium. And of course PFAS, from the car washes, the car waxes, the boots, the coats, the backpacks, car upholstery, clothing and textiles, ski waxes and gear, food wrappers, building materials like that Tyvek wrap, personal care products, and any leaky bits of anything coming out of dumpsters. Are these units for current island residents only, resulting in no net difference in trash and vehicles on island? If not, does the application specify how much turnover or how many cars they are proposing? If all of the units were to full-time residents at 156, if you assumed 1.5 cars per unit, that, that is 234 cars, and people wax their cars more than once a year because it wears off. If you kept the 39 affordable housing units as full-time but rented out the others and only allowed two-week rentals, your car number at 1.5 cars per unit jumps to 6,160, oh, 4,622 cars. If it's two cars per unit, it's 6,162. And if all those rental units were short-term rentals, so that you could rent it out twice per week, if it were two cars per unit, you'd be looking at 24,414 cars per year. Many cars travel many highway miles before reaching Hyannis, bringing their contaminants with them on the ferry. Some questions I recommend you consider during your deliberations include: How does the comprehensive permit application before you address the effects upon abutting water resources, directly abutting private wells, further downgradient private wells, and via the development's contribution to the municipal's Zone 2? Specifically, what does it claim with respect to the volume of contaminated stormwater and the potential overwhelming of the uncontaminated recharge that is currently on-site? Preventing contamination from the runoff of fire suppression waters, preventing the contamination unmanaged runoff from just the stormwater, preventing the contamination from human trash and waste, dumpsters, all that PFAS on the consumer products, and diapers. What are the types of rentals being proposed? What is the estimated impact with respect to cars, vehicle trips, wastewater, and trash? How is the proposed development projected to impact town resources like waste removal, recycling, hazardous material removal, wastewater treatment, water supply lines, water production capacity, water storage capacity, and your ability to maintain water pressure, especially as the town and Mass DEP investigate PFAS in the island's aquifer and treatment is considered? When was the last time that Zone 2 was delineated? Do you know what it is really? The DEP-approved wellhead protection areas as stated in 310 CMR 22.02 say a Zone 2 is that area of an aquifer which contributes water to a well under the most severe pumping and recharge conditions that can be realistically anticipated. 180 days of pumping at safe yield with no recharge from precipitation. Do you think your water consumption has increased since the Zone 2 was last delineated? Has your town's idea of what severe pumping and recharge conditions looked like changed since the Zone 2 was delineated? Has it changed since the fire? What would it be if there were a fire? The first 11 words of Article 97 in the Massachusetts Constitution are "The people shall have the right to clean air and water." This application is also missing details about the net increase in air pollution from vehicles, generators, and waste, and also the net decrease in air quality from the vegetative loss that has already occurred based on Google Earth images. Are those emergency backup generators, by the way, running on diesel? Because if that's what they are, you should know that the emissions on an emergency backup generator is not as strict as the emission on a diesel truck. Also, tire wear releases volatile organic chemicals including difenolamine antioxidants, phthalates, benzothiazole, benzotriazoles, and alkylphenols. These have been highlighted for their potential implications for air pollution. Trees, known for combating air pollution, have been removed from the site already, which brings me to another point. Not only does the loss of trees affect water quality, erosion, and habitat, the replacement of trees with impervious surfaces, especially dark-colored impervious surfaces, will contribute to the local air temperature rise and local air quality degradation. Has the heat island effect introduced by the impervious surfaces proposed in this application been properly addressed? Have the air quality effects been thoroughly modeled and adequately mitigated? This application is missing a water filtration system that removes metals, PFAS, and dissolved contaminants or biohazards. The neighbors' private wells and the greater municipal water supply, water supply should not be impaired for anyone's profit. That is why a project of this size and scope is not allowed by right. As I said, there have already been changes that have likely impaired the water there. Plants, especially woody plants, are very good at removing nutrients, nitrates, phosphates, and contaminants such as metals, pesticides, solvents, oils, and hydrocarbons from soil and water. They, these pollutants are used by the plants for growth or stored in the wood. In one study, a single sugar maple-growing roadside removed 60 milligrams of cadmium, 140 milligrams of chromium, 820 milligrams of nickel, and 5,200 milligrams of lead in a single growing season. The application does not adequately address the chemicals likely to be discharged into a butter's drinking water and into the Zone 2 recharge area. Further, the introduction of additional pollutants and co-contaminants will make it more difficult to filter the PFAS out of the groundwater than it already is. Organic co-contaminants can compete with the PFAS absorption in carbon filters causing them to fail sooner. This cannot be solved with monitoring wells because by the time contaminants are detected, the residents will have already been drinking it. You cannot put the toothpaste back in the tube. And before someone says, "Well, there's probably already PFAS there. It's everywhere," I would direct you to the Mass DEP private well testing program data, which indicates non-detect results for samples taken from 28 Maya Comet Road and 11R South Shore Road. What chances does their clean water stand against 7.2 million gallons per year of parking lot runoff and trash juice? Would you put a straw in that stormwater? In 1995, Oprah Winfrey quoted Maya Angelou as having once said to her, "You did then what you knew how to do, and when you knew better, you did better. When it comes to protecting our natural resources, we all need to do better, but especially those entrusted with protecting the drinking water recharge of a sole-source aquifer, you have no Plan B." No reasonable measures have been offered to prevent dissolved contaminants in storm or fire water from entering the sole-source aquifer because they don't yet exist. My opinion is that the application is not in compliance with Review Objectives 1, 4, and 7. Since the stormwater cannot be adequately cleaned of chemical pollutants prior to discharge, the town does not supply municipal water to the residents downgradient of this project, and the town water supplier is currently cycling wells and forced to request funding for filters indicating that available resources are not secure enough to intentionally add more pollutants to the sole-source aquifer, the island's only drinking water supply. It is not possible to condition the changes required to prevent the chemical contamination that would result from this proposed project. It is therefore also my opinion that this permit application must be denied in order to protect the public and private drinking water supply. Thank you again for letting me share this with you. I am happy to provide a copy of my speaking notes and their citations for your reference, and I can make myself available for any questions you may have about my comments or the information contained herein.
Thank you. Um, I think if you could submit the talking notes, um, with your citations, that would be helpful. If anybody wants to pull them up, we can have them on the website.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I'll just need to receive a copy of that.
Yeah, yeah. If you can email it, um, Mr. Durencis can probably, uh, direct you how to do that. Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Haverty?
Yes, Madam Chair, I would like to just respond briefly. I'd like to thank Ms. Mello for acknowledging that, in fact, the modified development is going to have a reduction in impervious surface from the original development. Um, as she noted, the prior proposal included a significant amount, just over 20,000 square feet, of porous or semi-pervious pavement. Um, that is now being completely eliminated. Um, so the impact for this development is going to be very slightly less than the impact from the original development. Um, I would also note, as it relates to the vehicle trips, the trash issues, and other concerns that were raised, um, this modification reduces the number of bedrooms in the project by about 100 bedrooms. There is going to be that many fewer people living at this project as a result. That's going, and we've already submitted, um, the update on the traffic in terms of the vehicle trips. There will be a reduction. There will be a reduction in the amount of trash that's generated. Um, so again, and the only thing that this board is reviewing as part of this process is the change between the original development and the proposed modification. And again, it's our position that, as it relates to stormwater, um, that there is a slight in, uh, increase in protection related to the modified project as it relates to the original project.
Lisa has a question for you.
Um, will there be garbage disposals in each unit? Just as a little aside.
I, I don't know the answer to that, but I mean, it is going on sewer, so I presume that that would be something that would be available, yes.
And could, um, Kristen Mello, we received a handout here from Mrs. Durencis. Could you briefly describe what, does this have to do with Kristen Mello, or is this?
Yes.
It does? Uh, there's an overlay of the map of Nantucket with the color gray, light orange, and dark orange. Would you just briefly tell us what we're looking at? I don't see a key or anything.
Sure. Um, those are the heat maps from 2023 with a 2023 overlay. The 2021 maps, which are dramatically different, arrived after, uh, Mrs. Durencis went to the print. So, um, I can send those along. The, the idea is that that little black dot is at 11R South Shore Road, and so that area that is not red and orange, right above the little black dot, once you pave that, you're just going to join that red. And so the other maps are zoomed out versions of that so that you can see what effect that will have on the island as a whole.
So it's the heat. It's the heat generated by the impervious surfaces.
Uh, yeah, that's, that's a heat map of the island. Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And again, the impervious surface for the original project is actually greater than the modified project.
Both are unacceptable.
Sorry, what was that, Mr. Durencis?
Both are unacceptable.
Okay.
Could I also add that Jamie Feely testified at HAC that the modified project was going to have, ah, 500 people living at this site. It's also clear from the traffic reports that there's going to be more than 1,000 cars per day moving in and out of the site. That's just, that, that's evidence they, they presented from their traffic reports. Just so you understand the size and the scope of this project.
Thank you.
And Madam Chair, I can go back and review the transcripts from the HAC process. I do not believe Mr. Feely testified that there will be 500 people living here. I think that he was responding to a figure that was put forth by Mr. Durencis. Um, I don't believe that he, on his own accord, suggested there would be 500. I don't know that he knows how many people will be living here.
That was his number.
Okay. All right. Well, I don't want to get into a back and forth about that. So what, I mean, we, our concern is, we're, we're looking at is the number of units, number of bedrooms, and we can extrapolate from there as, as, you know, a ballpark figure.
And again, the, the impacts on both the town's water and sewer are reduced by the elimination of these 100 bedrooms, and that is something that was also addressed in the HAC proceeding.
Okay.
Um, I don't know if Ms. Mello's on, but I have a, just a question.
Ms. Mello, are you still on to take questions?
Maybe somebody can answer this.
She raised her hand, so I think.
Okay, okay. I don't, sorry, I can't see her in my. Sorry, Madam Chair. Kristen, you should be able to speak. Okay, Jim, did you have, you had a question for her?
We just had a lot of studies thrown at us. So you said that the 41.1 inches was the annual rainfall based on, uh, the airport, I guess?
That's.
Used, uh, for, or Don, do you know what, what we use for rain? I'm just trying to get a comparison of what his runoff reports show.
Yeah, I think, uh, I'd have to verify it, but that sounds about right for yearly rainfall in areas like this.
Okay.
Uh, the only other thing I would point out is that, don't forget, 40% of the impervious area is roof area. That will be obviously clean runoff that doesn't have to be treated. So, in those numbers with all those gallons that were quoted, you know, just to put it in perspective.
Well, there seems to be a difference in opinion on a roof runoff as well, being contaminated.
Because, is it the roof asphalt?
Yes.
The roof is asphalt, and the pavement is asphalt. But are you saying that those are two different, they have two different levels of, um, pollutants?
Yeah, I would say they definitely have different levels of pollutants. The pollutants in a parking lot are obviously going to be far greater than any of the pollutants on the roof.
Because the car, and the runoff from a car, and the dripping from a car. I gotta say, her numbers, especially the, the cars and the list of pollutants, further supports my concern about this water, this development and water quality. It, it just, between what she just reported, and she sounds very, you know, well, well-spoken and well-educated on the subject, and Scott Horsley's review and his findings, it just blows my mind if, if these things are not addressed, how the developers are going to sleep at night. I just don't understand how you can move forward with the numbers and the pollutants and the, the negatives. Um, as far as water quality, this is, like I said last time, and I'm going to continue to say it, nothing else matters more than this. And there is a big gap between what you are saying and what we've heard from these two well-qualified experts on wa, water quality. So, and you have not said you're going to put any water purification system in to address any of these findings. So I'm just really disappointed because I am not against development on Nantucket, and I am not against, um, more housing. I think it is necessary, but if you can't make this safe and have clean water for the residents and this, abutters. the abutters, which we're not considering enough and we're not discussing, these people have been here a long time. They do not deserve to have their water quality compromised by this development. Thank you.
And respectfully, this project is compliant with all applicable regulations and
Not based on what the other two experts.
And we respectfully disagree. And again.
You're going to have to educate us on where, how we decipher that.
Well, again, the only review this board is doing is a comparison between the original project and the modified project, and there is no change as it relates to stormwater.
Mr. Pucci, let us know that our reach goes further than just the comparison between the two. It's a broader scope, and quit trying to tell us.
I will not quit telling you exactly what the applicable review of this project is.
Well, based on what Mr. Pucci said, you're wrong.
And I'm telling you that I am actually correct. It's right in the regulations, it's right in the remand order.
So you don't think we're allowed to say our opinion on water quality that's going to protect people?
You can say your opinion on anything you want to as part of this project.
Based on what we've heard?
What I'm saying is that your jurisdiction of what you have authority to rule on as part of this project is limited by the regulation, it's limited by the remand order, and it is only applicable to the impacts of the modification as proposed.
And so, Mr. Pucci, would you please let us know what we're, are we allowed to talk about the water quality or not?
Thank you, Mr. Pucci. I was just going to say, we will rely on our counsel for direction on that matter. That's okay.
Yes, I believe it's within the scope, in my opinion, it's within the scope of your review on remand. And the reason I say that, I don't disagree with Attorney Haverty about the letter of the regulations, but as I pointed out numerous times before, there's been such a passage of time between the time the matter should have been remanded to you for a public hearing to now, that it would be frankly irresponsible for you to not consider current conditions. And I'm not saying, I'm not, I don't get to wave a magic wand and have that upheld by the HAC. There is no doubt about it that it'll be a legal issue for determination at the HAC if we end up at an HAC appeal, but it's going to be an issue that will have to be litigated and resolved at that level, and then possibly in further judicial review in Superior Court, and then a further potential review in the Massachusetts Appeals Court or even the Supreme Judicial Court. And again, this is a very unique issue where you have such a passage of time between the time it should have, that legal error when HAC should have remanded it in the time that you have now. You know, things like PFAS were not really being discussed several years ago. And you have an instance, it's not in the project area, but you do have an instance where, you know, you have Mark Willett dealing with PFAS issues in.
We have an active, we have an active DEP investigation going on on the island.
You know, it's something that you, at least, let's put it this way, I would recommend you hear all you can during the public hearing on all of these issues, and then when you deliberate on it, you're going to deliberate and render a decision. Mr. Pucci, I don't know if HAC's going to side with this, but do you think in general, they would understand our concerns that maybe things like this outweigh this need for affordable housing, and would be negligent to say affordable housing trumps all, even dirty water? Boards always will address local concerns. Do you have local concerns, health and safety issues, which in your opinion outweigh the need for housing? That's going to be the standard. It was the standard the first time around when they litigated it, so.
If I could add to that?
Yeah, go for it.
She said, yeah.
I said yes, sorry.
Aside from the legal arguments, there is something fundamentally wrong with allowing a development to be built that you know is going to contaminate, cause pollution, and potentially end the usefulness of our sole-source aquifer. You've heard testimony. You have been given a transcript of Willett's testimony before a Capitol Program Committee where he was saying that he, by using the public wells, he is drawing PFAS into those public wells. And so when there's a fire, the more water he has to draw, the more all of our drinking water island-wide becomes at risk. At what point do we allow a developer to kill a whole island? That's sort of the fundamental issue here, which is being ignored in the legal argument about scope and all of these legal arguments. Isn't your duty, isn't our duty, isn't the duty of everybody here to save this island, save our drinking water for tomorrow and for our children and for future generations? And this project doesn't do it.
Thank you.
Three quick points on the scope of the board's review as it pertains to stormwater. The first is, in 2018, when this was in front of the board the first time, nobody knew what PFAS was, and now it's a major issue for the island. My second point is that, under the HAC standards, they usually look at a 10% change. I've actually calculated it. If you take your own peer reviewers' numbers, Cheshire, he says 32,000 square feet. That's 12.3% increase in impervious coverage. My third point is one that was in my last letter. The ENF certificate from NEPA, that's the state agency that does environmental review, mentioned the Zone 2 and said that they have to recharge to the groundwater in a way that does not degrade quality, and this should be addressed in the local permitting and approval. So the state is telling you, you're the board to do it. The final thing I wanted to say in response to Mr. Mondani about HAC and what might happen, I had a case 10 years ago, Reynolds versus Stowe, Board of Appeals of Stowe, and it's relevant because that's a case where the appeals court said, even under Chapter 40B, drinking water trumps affordable housing. That's a case from the appeals court, and when there was a case, a situation similar to this, where you had pollutants from the project that would affect an abutters well, the court sided with drinking water. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I could respond, please?
Oh, sure.
First of all, the Reynolds case, which Attorney Murphy's firm certainly did handle, but it dealt with specific set of local rules as it related to drinking water, and the fact that that board did not actually review those local rules when it granted waivers. So that's why it was remanded back to the board for further proceedings, and my understanding is that ultimately a project did move forward there. I did want to address the issue with regards to the passage of time. Certainly, there have been a number of years that have gone past since this project was, the notice of project change was filed. However, I'm not aware of any local rule or requirement relating to drinking water that has been changed in that period of time. We've put forth evidence of numerous projects throughout the town that have been approved and moved forward with stormwater designs essentially identical or even significantly less protective than what we are proposing here. I have not seen evidence of a single development anywhere ever in the history of Nantucket that has been required to provide the level of stormwater protection that appears to be being sought for this project. That is a clear violation of General Law's Chapter 40B, Section 20, which prohibits treating subsidized housing in a manner that is unequal from unsubsidized housing. So again, our contention is that we are meeting all applicable requirements. We are, in fact, providing a greater level of stormwater protection than many projects throughout the island propose, but certainly we have seen no evidence of any project that has been required to prepare, provide additional protection to the level that we're being requested. We don't think it's reasonable, and we certainly don't think it's within the scope of the board's review.
Madam Chair, I don't think it's appropriate for us to compare to other developments. I'm looking at this development. I think we are all just looking at this development, and we are not being told that we have to compare it to other projects that have been approved and what they've been approved for. I'm just looking at this solely. I don't think it's up to me to know the other projects and how they compare to this, and this just sounds.
In the time since this project was originally proposed, there have been numerous developments in Nantucket that have been constructed with similar or lesser stormwater systems than what is being proposed here. There's been no hue and cry about how those are going to impact the town's drinking water supply.
I wasn't involved in those, so.
I don't know whether or not you were involved or not, but again.
Well, I'm saying I wasn't, but are we supposed to be considering?
State law is very clear. You cannot treat subsidized housing in a manner that is unequal from how you treat unsubsidized housing, and that is what you're proposing to do, and we will not stand for it.
Yeah, we have, I just, Mr. Durensis, we have about 15 minutes left, so I want to talk about, see if there's anyone else that hasn't had an opportunity to speak, and then talk about what we're going to talk about next time.
I have some other issues. You have a agenda item for me to do some response, and I have some response on some other issues that I wanted to get to.
Okay.
But on this argument.
On the argument of?
George, your counsel attorney, Pucci, answered it already by saying, because of the passage of time, things were not known then that are known now. We know that PFAS is dangerous now, and the fact that other projects, we've looked at those other projects, they're all different, they're all distinguishable, they're all smaller, all those kinds of things. We know now things that we did not know then. His view would be, if it's an affordable housing project and you discover that it's doing something dangerous that you didn't know before, you are forever barred from protecting the public? Nonsense. We would say, deny the project, we'll defend that in the courts. No court is going to say, let them build something that's unsafe for the community. So I have other issues I need to get into if I could.
Yeah, I think you can, let's see how we go. I'd like to, go ahead.
I can go ahead? So at last, at last week's session, at the last session, we had called a witness by the name of Bo Barber. You heard his testimony. He's a former firefighter who protected you, protected the Veranda Fire, and he continues to protect you by coming before you at these hearings. He was at the Veranda Fire. He is not employed by the town. He's not employed by anyone. He comes forward as a citizen. We want to record for the record his testimony, which is being passed out to you now to be incorporated in the record. And I want to draw your attention to a sentence that he said, "A fire any larger than the Veranda House, combined with wind, would quickly overwhelm our current water resources and leave our personnel resources completely ineffective. If we've learned anything from the fires in LA, it's that without enough water, you can't fight a fire." So we want that incorporated into the record of these proceedings. Also, we had put into the packet for last week's meeting a traffic analysis prepared by the town of Nantucket. And I'm bringing to your attention two pages out of that traffic study. The first page is a list of the most dangerous intersections by location, which has, based on the severity of crashes. And if you look at page one, what I've passed out, look at number 20. Number 20 is the intersection that's affected by this project. Then I would ask you to look at the map that I've distributed to you. Again, it's from the traffic report. Again, it was commissioned by the town of Nantucket, and it has a map. And on that map, there are some blue lines, and that, those blue lines basically tell you that's where you should not build or permit a project like this. This is roadways by crash severity And as you see, it covers Surfside Road down to and past this project site. We already included this in the packet. This is just by way of making sure that you understood why we put it into the packet. When you evaluate their argument about why they don't have a pedestrian access to Surfside Road, all that convoluted stuff about it has to be in the town's right of way, and therefore it's up to the DPW, that's not what the proposal was. They were going to provide their easement, access for kids and wheelchairs and baby carriages to Surfside Road as part of their project, designed by them, built by them, maintained by them, and now suddenly it belongs to somebody else. And maybe the town will do it, maybe the town won't. They haven't even talked to the town. That shows you what you're dealing with here. So when you're looking at the crash data that says this is a high severe area for crashes, one of the worst areas on Nantucket, and you see them trying to pull out of an easement for pedestrian safety, you should deny that Finally, I want to make a comment about, don't grant a permit with conditions because that won't work. The purpose of this hearing is not just to hear from the developer about all their plans, but for you to hear the objections so that you can know the problems with the development. Last week, you heard a veteran firefighter who was present at the Veranda House fire. Bo Barber tells us about the practical limitations. Bo Barber tells us about the practical limitations that Nantucket faces regarding fire protection. We are an island with a sole source aquifer 30 miles out to sea. These are exactly the kind of local concerns that you should be identifying and protecting. The Veranda House fire had every available Nantucket firefighter present to fight it, which amounted to 22 firefighters, and it included retired firefighters. Mutual aid didn't arrive for hours, and no additional equipment was brought in. What you may not remember was a house fire in Hingham a few days later after the Veranda House fire. That fire was smaller than the Veranda House fire, but because it happened on the mainland, mutual aid was available to the tune of 120 firefighters from nine other towns, not counting Hingham's own department. Nantucket has a huge local concern about fire safety that no other town in the Commonwealth faces. We are alone out to sea. Once you've identified a local concern, what do you do with it? The way the process is supposed to work, when you have identified a local concern, the developer is supposed to work with you to come up with a modified, different project that addresses the local concerns. As you've seen, that is not happening here. Therefore, any talk of allowing the project with conditions to address local concerns is doomed to failure. Instead, we are asking for an outright denial. Here's why a project approved with conditions won't work. This Board of Appeals already tried a project with conditions with the original project, and the conditions were not accepted by the developer. Back in 2018, 2019, at the first hearings on the subject, the board put in tremendous effort into helping the developer with plans that the board felt would work with the practical limitations on Nantucket arising from local concerns. It should be an enormous red flag that these developers did not take those carefully worked-upon conditions and accept those local concerns into current project plans. We are dealing with developers who want to do what they want to do. Developers throughout this current hearing, the second hearing on this project, has not made project changes necessary to address local concerns that have already been identified in these hearings. We have had hearing after hearing. We have identified and discussed various specific local concerns with these plans. But here we are, with no new set of revised plans having been submitted, nothing but arguments and posturing from developers, no effort to work with the board or other parties to make a reasonable project. These developers have already issued on December 27, 2024, marketing material in which they freely admit they are not going to try to make the development work with Nantucket local concerns. Here's what their newly released marketing material says. Quote, "As part of a remand from the Superior Court, the Surfside Crossing project is currently before the Nantucket ZBA. The developers are asking the ZBA to make a decision on the current version of the project. The developers anticipate that the matter will be returned to the Housing Appeals Committee by late February for further review. Significant progress has been made on the project. The infrastructure is almost fully installed, with nearly all the utilities, road, and foundational elements in place." They are already marketing the project for the very plan that's before you, with one access road, 156 units, and all the work that they've done at their own risk. So while you've been having hearings with the developers actively not listening and not withdrawing the project and not working with the town on fixing this project, they are selling the development as is, without any changes. You can see from that marketing...
Mr. Durensis, we have to wrap up in like four minutes, so can you...
Four minutes, okay.
Yeah, and I still need to talk about the agenda for next week. And so if you can, can you wrap it up in like one minute?
Okay.
Thank you.
Three sentences. "We can see from that marketing plan, developers are playing a game with the board, where this is not a real hearing, and conditions are a waste of time. Conditions are just another word for why this project doesn't work and should be denied. The developers have no problem with putting human life at risk, but you expect them to follow conditions? Instead of looking at this project for what it is, a development that puts the health, safety, and welfare of the entire island at risk, it is a mistake for you to think, oh, we can make the health, safety, and welfare of the entire island a condition of approval." That won't work. We ask that you deny this project emphatically.
Thank you, Mr. Durensis. So we do have to wrap up.
Can I just respond? 30 seconds.
I mean, if it's just, is it something new, or just to say you disagree?
I just want to point out, it's a little bit disingenuous for Attorney Durensis to be arguing that my clients did not accept a 60-unit decision that this board imposed on it, without also noting that his clients appealed that decision. Secondly, I wanted to point out that there was, in part of the original hearing process, the tipping point clients entered into a presentation of John Arkun, Ph.D., dated January 16, 2019. That actually does address PFAS. PFAS was known, was an issue, was discussed as part of the original hearing. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so we have meetings that are upcoming. We have Tuesday, the 11th, at 11:00 to 2:00, in person, in Zoom here for Surfside Crossing. I would like...
The 19th is a typo. That should start at 1:00 p.m. 11th is at 11:00 a.m. The 19th should be at 1:00 p.m.
Oh, okay. 1:00 p.m., okay, okay. So 1:00 to 4:00?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. Okay. So for our next meeting, I'd like to continue the conversation, obviously, hearing from Attorney Haverty, who was going to do some research and report back to us on the conservation restriction, and how that will impact an access should be discussed. I think also, I heard the board saying the community building reduction increases green space, decreases stormwater runoff, also had concerns from HDC, the buildings along the South Shore Road, and allowing for that secondary access to contemplate, you know, a unit reduction, changes in the height and massing and variation of the buildings along South Shore Road. And I think those, addressing those, or at least coming back with some, meeting us halfway, or some response to our concerns, would be very appreciated. And I think that even just addressing those two areas to start will address the concerns of the community that we keep hearing overwhelmingly about access for emergency and traffic and the stormwater runoff. So we can continue the conversation on those, and we can, Billy and I will work together to set an agenda and get that posted. So after that, we have the 19th, 1:00 to 4:00, and then we have a regular meeting, February 13th, at 1:00.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I'll clean it up on the next agenda, but we have our, we have our, the next special meeting is Tuesday, the 11th.
Yeah.
Then we have our regular meeting, Thursday, the 13th.
Thursday, the 13th. Yeah, 1:00, yeah, 1:00 to 4:00. Yep.
Yep.
No, no. The 11th is at 11:00 a.m. The 11th is 11:00 to 2:00.
Just think 11th at 11:00.
Yeah. And then February 19th, 1:00 to 4:00, February 13th is our regular meeting, 1:00 to 4:00. Okay. Could I take a motion, or could someone make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay. Alisa, seconds. All right, we'll do roll call since Lisa's on Zoom. So John?
Aye.
Alisa?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Okay, so we are adjourned. We'll see everybody back here on the 11th at 11:00 a.m. Thank you so much.
Thank you.